The member has determined to have falsified due record application request of candidate for expense reimbursement has determined to have annoying default statement in the meeting to the prejudice of any member of the public. GE, the member has repeatedly violated the plaintiff's bylaws, county zoning regulations, and the manner of its impudence, leaving membership in question. Finally, the member has become statutory or legally ineligible to maintain membership and is failed to resign at the time of that. So that probably take care of somebody who's not accounted for. It was not within the city, it was there because they're in the city, no doubt. The rest is pretty much procedural stuff. And how this proceeds, whatever comes to fruition. So that's what I came up with. I'm just checking on it, I don't know if you have any additional questions?
Nope.
Okay. I mean, it's time to do it, look at it, it's very spirited.
What's that?
We have time, Kate, to look at it, we have to consider it.
Yeah, we're on air, take a look at it, and then if you want to check to see that we did make contact with, you know, like, his name, he was somebody that asked me about getting an application, and so that's why I was surprised I didn't see it.
They are online too.
So you want to check on that? If you have, go ahead and start looking at it, um, we had to file with the other folks, and we'll talk about that when we're gonna go ahead and do interviews and how we do that process, so get that filled. Anything else?
Not yet.
Yeah.
But it's not.
It is, sorry. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Not anything else?
Thank you. Oh, we do need to say this session, attorney-client privilege, probably about ten minutes.
I'm sorry?
That would be...
Yes, and, um, if you're...
For ten minutes, attorney-client privilege, to discuss things with the candidate.
Okay. That would, uh, that would run against if we did ten minutes, so we'll decide with that to move on.
I mean, I don't think it's about a particular...
Okay.
If you would, Dave?
Sorry, there?
No.
Are we still in an open meeting?
I'm sorry?
Are we still in an open meeting?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, then this discussion here should be open to the public.
Okay.
And we should be having it a lot louder so everybody can hear.
My discretion would be...
Yeah, exactly. Because we're in an open meeting right now.
Okay, my wife's getting out of the hospital today. I already know she's been in hospital.
I'm just asking that you guys follow the open meeting rules, guys.
I'm just telling my friends.
If you want to adjourn, adjourn, and take a break.
He just did, he just said it openly.
Well, it's not county business really, but all right. Another dumb question, what do you talk, is that county business? Waste of time, it's a dollar. This is funny, this is business. Don't worry about that.
Did I switch to the email?
Yep.
Change tonight?
She's tonight. Uh, GE.
Okay, um, as chair, I get to move, uh, the things on the agenda around some Michael. Um, we're gonna go ahead, maybe fifteen, we're gonna go ahead and have you go down.
Oh, after a minute ago, you said we had Todd wait you because we were gonna bump up...
You have your opportunity to go down.
Is this my punishment?
No punishment.
It sure seems like that.
It's...
Because a minute ago, you were having Todd hold up.
It's my...
Okay, I got you.
So, so you're up.
Oh, I'm up now?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were moving down.
I have you up now.
You guys are pretty goddamn cocksure yourselves, aren't you? Okay, you are bullying people around at the door, and I see your employees standing there at the door where I was a couple weeks ago, and you slid into my asshole room. But you didn't say a damn thing to her. Prejudice and bias. You guys are all together trying to run, ramrod this solar thing through, and you're taking retaliation against people. Okay, I've been paying attention, and you can laugh all you want, Mr. Crue, you're gonna make a joke around here.
Thank you, sir.
Because you guys have singled out an individual, I've done my research, I've never met him, but whoever Mr. Willits is, this whole thing about you guys trying to write rules and get rid of him, and, and kick into the curb, and then you've got your person gonna take applications at the same time as you're doing this, is that really what's happening? Is that really what's happening there, Keith? Is that really what you're doing? You guys are just gonna ramrod shit through this county and take advantage of the fucking citizens and treat them like shit?
Watch your language.
I'll watch my language all I want, sir, and I can say fuck, shit, piss, cum, cunt in here, and there's nothing you can do about it. Try it. Ask your attorney, he seems to be all smart over here, this is Constitution 301 for you there, Todd. You don't have the right to control my speech. You opened up the floor. That means I get to speak, and I have a fucking First Amendment right to use it, just like you have a Second Amendment right, we have First Amendment right, it needs to be exercised, and I'm fucking exercising it right now, to show you what it looks like when your citizens come in here and talk to you like you need to be talked to. Because of shit you're doing and taking advantage of people out here, this thing with Tom Hoffman, you know you're wrong, and I'm glad he's having an executive session with you to discuss about action against the county, because next time you try to control my language, there's gonna be action against the county. Fuck around and find out, buddy. Kirsten, how much time do I have left?
About a minute thirty.
A minute thirty. A minute thirty should be just about enough time to go through the way you guys are running this meeting. I saw in the paper that you're trying to tell people where they can and can't put cameras. It's obvious you're full of shit, because my camera's right here. You have this door back here open where people can't hear and can't understand what's going on up here, and then you have individual county employees coming up here during an open meeting, and you're having whisper sessions between them where we can't hear out there. That's a violation of coma. You coming back in here trying to have a private discussion with an individual down here during the meeting is also a violation of coma. What the hell is wrong with you guys? Can't you get these guys straight? If they want to go have a little sit-down session back here, you call them adjournment or you call it recess, and then go do that. But you guys just abandoning your seats up here, and then you want to treat the citizens like we're the problem? You guys are the problem. Whatever amount of time I have left, you can have that, I'll reserve it for next week.
Thank you. Justin, you're next.
So you're moving me up as well, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
All right, my name is Dr. Justin Schties. Last week when I was in here, I asked you guys what the rules were for the meetings, and Keith, on you it says that you sign up and you have three minutes, but a week before that, Keith, you had told Michael there that, uh, he needed to be polite, or he would be removed from the meeting. So, Todd, question for you, is polite versus impolite viewpoint discrimination?
No.
How not?
Because this is not an open public forum.
So when you have your three minutes, Keith gets to say if we get to be polite or not polite in there? Really? How about you go fuck yourself?
I can bring you a drink.
How about you go fuck, how about you go fuck yourself, Keith, is that polite enough for you? Am I gonna be removed for that?
No.
Why not? I'm not being polite anymore.
No, you're being boring.
I'm being boring?
Yeah.
Oh, really? Kind of takes one to know one, doesn't it, Keith? Or doesn't it, whatever your name is?
He's a commotile.
So, uh, so also, I noticed that when, uh, Michael was speaking, you made a point to tell him that he couldn't interrupt, but I've already been interrupted twice here already. Why do you guys get to interrupt? Can you answer that one for me there, Todd? Why do you guys get to interrupt when you demand that we can't interrupt you during our own time? So he was speaking during his own time, and you kept interrupting him, but you told him that he couldn't interrupt you assholes. Why? Todd, last meeting, you said that, uh, Michael was being abrasive and abusive. Is abrasive and abusive viewpoint discrimination?
Nope.
How not?
Because this is in a public forum.
Oh, really?
We can regulate a non-public forum.
So you can regulate someone's speech during their three minutes?
Yep.
Really?
Yes.
Where does it say, where do you...
Paulus versus New Hampshire.
Yeah, what's that say?
Three forty-five U.S. statute.
What's that say?
That says the principles of the First Amendment are not to be treated as promised that everyone's opinions or beliefs to express may gather around him at any public place and anytime, a group or discussion, or instruction. Nothing in the Constitution requires the government to free the grand access to all who wish to exercise the right of free speech.
Nobody's arguing that. Nobody's arguing that there, Todd. I'm arguing your rules. Once you opened up the three minutes, one asshole, stop. Asshole, stop.
Reclaim your time.
Once you open it up, where does it say you can restrict their speech? It is open. So you get into viewpoint discrimination over what abusive is and abrasive is, because somebody could come in here and you would determine that it's not based on your discrimination of them. So, Michael, can you guys, can you guys stop? Can you guys stop? Why do you get to talk?
I'm not speaking to you, sir.
You're being disruptive.
I'm not getting a shit of who you're speaking to.
You're being disruptive.
What are you, talk about abrasive and abusive and impolite?
Time?
No, 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 no. I've been interrupted. No, you don't even get to ask how much time I have left. No, you do not. No, you do not. No, you do not. So...
How much time, Chris?
About forty seconds.
Thank you. Todd, two weeks ago, you told Michael that it was a waste of county business or county time for him to sit here and talk, but you've allotted time for people to speak. Someone comes in here and speaks, and they've signed up for it, how is that a waste of time? No matter what they're talking about, you granted them that time, and you get to, you get to determine if it's a waste of time? That again is discrimination, because you don't want to hear it, you get to determine.
Just...
Three minutes left, how much of that was interrupted by these assholes?
Have a great day, thank you, Justin.
You don't know? I didn't get my full time there, Keith, and you all know it, while I was speaking, I listened to this asshole talk, got interrupted by that asshole, and got interrupted by that.
Thank you, have a great day.
Yeah, have a great day as well there, Keith. All right.
Matt, Eric, Maybombs, negative citizen.
Todd's case law is way off, way off.
All right. All right, what's next?
When you open a forum, you can't discriminate. You have the ability to...
Enough!
...open a forum. You gonna yell at me?
I've had enough. No more.
Some citizens.
No more. You're disrupting the business meeting. Oh, fuck you, you just disrupted me.
Crue disrupted his public comment. Your attorney talked over...
Am I speaking to my county clerk?
Yes. During his public comment, is that appropriate?
We take an exception. Do that. Yes, in just a minute. Hi, Mary.
How's that going, Mary?
All right. I would interrupt a, what, for executive session for a fight?
Attorney-client privilege for ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Move to go into executive session for purposes of attorney-client privilege discussions for a period of ten minutes starting at ten nineteen, with the meeting to reopen at ten twenty-nine, and commission meeting room for purposes of discussing legal matters and claims involving the county, including county councilor, the commissioners, if you want...
You don't need to say names. That's taken a break. Not at all.
Okay. There's executive, move to executive room seven. I'm high.
I'm high.
Okay.
I didn't really have it, I mean, I started going over the changes you guys talked about last night for the debate, I didn't have a lot of traction on all the other sections.
Okay, did you guys have any questions? No?
No.
Okay.
Are there, are there some more rules that we can get? I know these came up today.
It was passed about a month ago. I just didn't have a copy of it.
Well, we asked last week for the rules, and we were only told there were three minutes, and now we get more, can we get the rest of them today?
Those are the rules, I have.
That's, that's all, that and the three minutes is all the rules there are?
The, the, the progress rules of order, the meeting rules of the chairman, yeah, that's it. As far as I know. You guys don't have any other files on the rules?
You want to be polite? All right, so we're gonna move on with business.
He said, all right, this is going on.
Yeah, thank you. So there is a big one open position for showing the planning. Um, do you guys want to have interviews like we did last time?
I think it'd be good thing to have, have a interview.
Okay. That'd be fine, that's what we did last time, I'm fine with that this time. Uh, she's gonna check on, um, any of Mike, uh, yes, I think, so he, I wanna make sure that he...
Took care of everybody, was it?
Right, thank you. Yeah, wanted to make sure that he got his application. Um, he had asked me about that, and I talked to him Monday night, and we could, uh, have her all just reach out, so I think she'll verify that, whether they did or not. If what they were, you're gonna have to go ahead and... He, uh, he gets more up here, he's a little bit...
What was it?
Uh, uh, the fourth paragraph, uh, fourth paragraph, fourth line, Scott's admitted bids for boundary work, the pad of the land, and that should be a pad at the Green Ridge out there.
Are you sure the, the pad of is for the new building tat, the land?
No, 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 this was, this was for the tanks.
Gotcha.
Yeah. The tank and the light bulb and everything will be in the light.
Yeah, yes, we did. We only got one.
Yeah. So what we do, see if we...
Oh, uh, like, we just asked a gentleman, they're standing in the doorway here, we asked, so if you would, this is, uh...
Yeah.
They come in or out.
We are.
This is, and that's what we...
Yeah, that's okay. Come on inside. You're walking. Come on inside. You're not listening.
Oh, no.
How do you understand what you... You got some...
So we're gonna, I appreciate you coming down, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna crack the doors so we can carry on business without any discussion, so that's what we...
Simon's, I'm under watch. Simon's, nonetheless, you can really press that.
Okay, fine, appreciate it.
It's not, it's not stress test. It's not gonna be a good thing, wanna be in or out, you know?
Yeah, just wanna be in or out, sorry, because we're in such a bad position, so... You're talking about walking the doorway? The door's in you, you're walking the doorway? Yeah, so, um, either in or out, one or the other.
Oh, we were, Keith, you know, we were standing out there.
You're disrupting the meeting.
No, we're not. We're outside the meeting, so thank you.
You're disrupting it.
Outside the meeting, okay, Keith.
Todd? Do you have anything else? I mean, if you need to go back upstairs, that'd be fine. It's up to you, we were on the vision. Never, I'm in motion, quick to finish, whenever you're ready.
So will the paper publish the minutes after? Really? Do it. Do it.
Well, I do some editing, we shall see though, yeah.
Oh, no, 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 come in.
We're showing editing, you know? And I apologize for what you guys had. You ready?
Don't tell anybody about the years.
I moved, we accepted minutes, so it's at ten thirty, twenty, twenty-four.
Second.
Second and all thirds, but I can hold those same time. Todd, did you do anything else?
I don't think so, just the program later. It's gonna be meeting dinner. Bring a coffee. Need to figure out a focus somehow.
Well, yeah, we can. I think the court's in the other room.
Remember that.
Full of court.
PowerPoint, everything.
What's that?
PowerPoint, everything.
Yeah. Um, at this time, uh, we're gonna go into just a brief discussion, Todd, last many nights meeting for the, um, conversation about sales tax, uh, like a year, what you guys heard, what you thought, um, those types of things.
Yeah.
If it's open discussion...
I think, uh, there, the majority of the folks there would prefer a sales tax increase versus any type of property tax increase, plus to keep the sales tax under what to pick up is, which meaning one percent's too high. So, and I've had some feedback, um, I'm not sure the cooperative possibility of the hospital and the county working together, that's been a question of why, they asked me, there have been many people asking me that situation, and I've had to explain some scenarios that have happened at the hospital over the years because of sequestration as well as, um, government taking back more money and not paying what they have in the past, they wanted to increase it to six percent, they take two percent down on that, um, and they put that off for another year and a half, I think, before the Congress goes after that again, but we'll see. Um, I don't know, I'm open to listening as I do.
Right.
But what, what, what was the overall that you got from the public that spoke?
Oh, from the public that spoke, okay.
Cause I think it was probably forty people spoke or more, I'll say.
I think my view of, of the community response, and it's, let me preface this by saying, it's always hard to judge with a small group of people like that countywide, because the, the small groups of people, uh, you know, whether the court against something, it did, they tend to be speaking for the whole county.
Right.
And that's what is, that is what is tough, to try to gauge what your response is. What I've heard is probably half of them said, yeah, it'd be okay, half of them said, no, we don't want it.
Oh, yeah, I heard a few say that they would be okay if it was just a hospital, a small hospital.
Yes. Well, like I say, it's, it's always hard to judge with a small group, whether the court or against something, and you're trying to do what's best for the county itself, not, not just for the individual group. Uh, you know, we've talked about sales tax before, and with what we heard at the, uh, the R and R, I was, you know, I was happy to explore it, uh, I don't know now that that's gonna be the way to go. I think that we need to, to lower the bill levy is, is going, the way they're gonna have to do it is keep pursuing what we're doing right now, which is going after the federal legislation to, uh, get us our, our money back for the thirty-three thousand acres that are off the tacklers. That's put in put trust. I, I don't know, in a, I guess, if I'm going to, uh, articulate this more, I guess I would say, I would rather have, let the hospital have the opportunity to go out with the sales tax rather than us. I don't know, I don't know the public opinion to be in our favor doing it otherwise.
And I, I don't believe sales tax is gonna put it in, in reducing the bill levy. It may be a band-aid for short amount of time, and I don't wanna, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. You know, I'm okay with pursuing, I guess, yeah, new, uh, possible sales tax for maybe a quarter, um, for the hospital. I guess at this point, we can pursue it, and then allow it to be put on the ballot and say with the general public.
Would that be our, our pursuit, or would that be the hospital passing?
To my knowledge, they can't pursue it as, they can't collect taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Really, only once it can, so they can't levy taxes.
Unless they get a legislative dispensation like you guys with or something, you know, along the lines of special.
Right.
Okay.
We would act as a conduit. We would collect the tax and then we give them appropriations. Yes, just like we do for a single citizen.
Right.
Yeah, but don't they, uh, have to go through us first, for the two go to the legislature?
I don't know that that's, I mean, I get, I haven't looked at, uh, thought they had, I mean, I was looking at statutes, but I wasn't looking for that, that in mind, so.
I didn't think that the hospital could directly do that.
Well, I think it was probably right in the sense that I don't know that the mechanics for the, like.
I think it would have to go through us.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, they would have to come request from us to start the process, but I, I'm, and what they would want, I don't know, I think they would have to sit down and put the pencil in paper and see, you know, quarter, half, whatever.
I don't know if you can just, I don't know, you guys can just do it and then give it, give it to them.
Yeah.
Say, in the, the, things that's passed, we put it in ballot, it says all that, it means legislative majority. I mean, the question, one of the questions being where is, what's the hospital's territory, what's the territory's taxes, or are they in county, or is it, do they have a, you know, like a city, are they more limited in reach?
The only the hospital, uh, water and county receives a tax from the two western portions of Jackson County, so there has been something put in place, even though it's property tax versus sales tax, there's something on the books for that, I don't know if it's.
I don't know where the hospital district is.
But, but is Pot County running that, it gives, so that's property tax versus.
Correct, that's what I said.
Oh, okay.
I, I said, if there's something in play that's similar, I don't know how that, if they, those two match up, but.
I think it would be whatever the hospital district, I'm, I'm guessing, whatever the hospital district is, uh, because I'm sure that Pot County comes, their hospital district does come partially in Jackson County, is what I'm guessing.
And they voted on it, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Jackson.
So like I say, I would, I would, I don't think that sales tax is going to do what we would want it to do, I believe you're correct, even if we, it would be band-aid, uh, I would be more comfortable in doing what we're doing right now, going after, uh, with federal legislation. I think that's the way to go.
Continue with that, that's our path.
So like I say, it's always hard when you have a small group, either for or against something, and you're trying to side with us, just for the county, to, you know, judge the response from that, so, that's just me.
Now, and Todd, you didn't have anything, so, or were you gonna walk through any of that today?
Well, so if you, if you guys want to, I, I have made a couple of changes, she did, the mask was.
Yeah.
If you wanna go get through.
If you didn't update the copy without one, like you wanted, what was the?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't print out an updated copy because I was not.
Okay.
Because I think there's, you know, there's many things that were added that I didn't get to.
Okay.
Like, uh, the whole peppers and detail. Um, so, but there, but there's no problem now if you wanna take the old version we had, because all I did was change, we have a term in there and, you know, we had some distance regulations you guys kinda set on, so.
Okay.
Maybe we can kinda go over some ten thousand foot things too, and I, once I got back and started, kinda zoomed through a couple of things, I think. Which one of them, I think somebody asked about index for table contents, is that, am I right about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and I, I think, look, look at the code here, because that's, I mean, the table contents would be probably, could be created for everything on here.
Correct.
All designing. And, I wonder about the, the index, what do you think, just a word index, kind of, or, if they were great, one of those word documents, I can imagine.
What are the other, correct, except already have it?
They don't, they don't have anything.
I think you love that.
I was, there's a definition section.
Uh, yeah, I've seen something in the past, uh, more of an appendix, hot in the center.
Well, I believe what we were talking about with that was, uh, the key issues.
Yeah, it was more of a bullet point.
More of a bullet point like, uh, Douglas County's, uh, starting on page, whatever I think it is.
I believe we had sort of, uh, uh, bullet point on that. It was basically, basically, it was like, I don't know, there's fifteen or twenty things.
Douglas County had fifteen over here.
That we had heard through the community that had been brought up at different meetings, and we said, okay, let's address these things, and let's make the bullet points right out of the gate, right into her, um, so that we can address those types of issues. One of them being, uh, decommission, that was one of them.
Yeah.
And so, that would be, you know, one of the more points.
I've been through all these notes that we did, and pulled out stuff that I thought was, you know, Johnson County, but it's, you said it would, Douglas County, that's what we're talking about. Well, and maybe we cut to the chase here, the, the idea of bed of this, now that we see the first page, right? And now therefore, the commission findings, you know, is where I consider to put the basis or the reasoning of the why, right? You know, why are you doing this, the, the regs are gonna be, you know, canned. You know, you can pull from them by reading the whole thing about what we're getting, but what we're doing in this first number paragraph is to make the findings about why you need this.
Right.
So you're literally body, you're kinda saying, this is what we're trying to do. And, I don't know if that was what you're meaning, like saying the bullet point, saying, we found that, you know, you need, uh, add the levy to make sure that we retain the rural character somewhere.
I think it's more of just, again, bullet points, uh, maybe just put up here, uh.
Did you say you made your, Johnson, your Douglas County's, here, did you take a look at that one?
Yeah, let's see what I've got. Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what we were kinda looking at, uh, talking about, the time, doing something along that lines.
Which, which one, you have it?
Uh, see where it says down there under the bullet point standard, bottom of page, and penny over the other, there's like fifteen of them.
Okay.
The, the, the subjects that, uh, we've heard from citizens that seem to be the most important ones that they wanna look at, is kinda what we're looking, what we wanna go with on that, right up front, that this is what we're looking at.
So if you don't have one, we can.
Well, I think it's looking like it was on page four. Okay?
Your page four?
Yeah, my page four.
Okay.
Section two, purpose and intent of the regulation.
There you go, that's it.
So, it's adapted a bit, it's not the same. But you see, it's planning mission and county officer, so it's visual impact, impact on wildlife and wildlife habitat, preservation of primary, cultural thing, blah, 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 so, just kinda looking here to see what, I think that's A's in there, that's the same as one on the Douglas County.
Okay.
So, B. C is three, no, three is different. Just as I said, mine is preservation, prime agricultural soils, protection of farming activities, um, there is this impact on cultural, historical, archaeological features that, uh.
That's, that's your B?
Yeah, it's just probably a reordering, reordering of theirs, I couldn't see a good bit.
Like I say, all I, all I basically noticed is things that we have heard from the public.
Yeah, I, I didn't see anything in Douglas County about the soil, it's harmless, it's, it's general against erosion, soil erosion broadly. Um. So, in essence, probably the, the way to do this, if you, if you guys are interested, then you take the paragraph one and through, A through I, cause I, I did redo it a bit, on that level, it kinda fit a little better, but I didn't have your guys' insight as to.
Sure.
What, insight as to what you heard, so this would be the, if you have another thing, we could, we can have it in this list, that's probably better.
Like, like I said, you, you were bullet points or A, B's, C, you know, but I think we just need to develop those, those things and then address those later in the regulations, because of how we're addressing those.
Yeah, well, that's, the idea was that these are giving you the, you're saying these are the general points that we're talking about, about what's guiding our.
Could even be, I mean, elicited as public concerns, and you're telling them, I'm gonna address those, that kind of thing.
Okay, I, I don't get it now, so, would it be better to put that in that, maybe make paragraph, hit the first page and paragraph two, and make paragraph two three?
Yeah. Thoughts, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I'll watch it.
I think that was the same thing as that, statement of concerns, that's, oh, concern.
Yeah. I thought there was an interesting comment, uh, at the meeting last Monday night, when we had talked about, see if you guys got this, we had talked about putting in the, the regulation restricting it to X number of papers, and I think two thousand was thrown out.
That's what I got, you.
Right, and there was a comment by an individual who said, well, why wouldn't you do that? Why can't it be larger, because if it's larger, then, if it's not big enough, I won't be eligible for some sort of tax, would you catch that? I thought that was an interesting comment. And this was an opponent of this whole process.
Yeah, well, I can imagine that there's, you know, as far as the interest of the operator, I mean, the scaling of it, you know, obviously the bigger they have in some respects, maybe the better off they are as far as, you know, they got three thousand paper one cash flows better than two thousand paper one.
No, this was that they wouldn't get, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect their property possibly, therefore they wouldn't get basically drawn out, that type of thing.
Okay, so by, by getting a larger one, you're standing in the area where.
Correct.
Operator has to pay up more. Joining win.
That's the comment that I.
I, I did catch that, I thought was interesting too, just in my mind, thinking that way, but.
Well?
Yeah, never heard that before. Anyway, sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't know how you, I mean, I don't know if you guys have interest in that particular, um, regulating that stuff.
No interest whatsoever. It has nothing to do with.
Yeah, I, I don't even know how that is.
We'll determine what we do through these as far as size and those types of things, and then let the part follow in the next.
Okay. Well, you had questions about the choices, so what, we can talk about how that works in this. I mean, I, I think it's pretty obvious that what you have is you have, this is, this separates out into, into three general zones, if you will, of regulation. One is all the point up to which the special use permit is given, so, there's no construction going on because they have a permission to do it, and that's where all this study goes on into what they're giving you, approved, so, there's really nothing to enforce because nobody's actually set a shovel to the ground yet. Or shouldn't have, at the very least. So, that's, you know, vast majority of first twenty pages is that. I think the second phase is what I call construction points, which is where they're building and can catch things that they're cutting corners on, or isn't according to their plans, or whatever, and that's, you know, an active thing where you're enforcing something as it's being built. And then the end of that, that portion of the construction phase is then just, you know, operations phase, compliance phase, and how you do that, and then probably in that is what happens if they abandon de-commission or reclamation.
Right.
So, that's the, if you're, when you're looking at this, that's the overall kind of vision I made in between, I think there is different, you know, methodologies that you're, you're employing, different people, I mean, that's involved for your guys' perspective, because at a certain point, it stopped becoming a, a special use permit and starts being an active project. And I don't know, I mean, Kate Todd's got an important position in this, but you also think about separate person being.
Right.
The building inspectors.
Right, we had talked about that last week, hiring somebody who would take on that responsibility, uh, would be eligible to take, but he had to pay for by. Turnover of energy. Yeah. Which will then have to monitor, code enforcement, that type of thing.
So that, the, so if we go to page twenty-three, that's the kind of division, section five is construction and operations inspection, winter and operating duties. And the, the, some of this flows through because when you do the special use permit, I put in on paragraph eleven, on page twenty, is the abandonment, de-commissioning and reclamation, so they gotta have a plan first, when they do the special use permit. When they do the special use permit, what are they doing, close? So, there's, there's that part of it. But this would be where you, construction, you know, paragraph one there on page twenty-three, we're talking about construction based duties and requirements. So that after approval, permit and during construction, the system, the operator, owner shell, it shows all the duties that they're required to do, and this would be either according to the plan that were submitted or, or continuing duties. That, you know, important part is paragraph four, the mandate, because my experience when you start constructing things, plans change, doesn't mean necessarily they're freely allowed to change everything, because they're not. And that's, this gives a, you know, a rear brake for them to change it for the contractor and the operator to change something and then advise the county to change theirs. Right, because if they change something that has material effect on what you agreed to, you guys have to know. And that's what that paragraph does. The, probably the key is non-compliance, that's on page twenty-six. Again, we're probably, on page twenty-six, number six. You know, up to the point that we actually give a special use permit, really, you know, penalty or compliance, the penalty is going to be permit.
Right.
You know, comply, so, um. So you can see those, but that, that's probably the three, um, kind of methods of doing that. So basically, this says, what, if you, if, if owner operator are doing something that's a violation of the regulations, and presumably the plans they submit with special use permit, this special use permit can say, you submitted X, Y, Z, but this doesn't comply with, blah, 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 right? So if they don't comply with the soil plan, and they don't stockpile topsoil.
Right.
And if they throw in a ditch to wash away, they're in violation. It says if you maintain a soil project without a permit, it's criminal violation, wrap or education, so. You can't continue, and that's probably just, you know, there's blanks there for what we find the penalty is. So misdemeanor is so good involved in, um, and that would be part from probably other things to do. But it's a criminal prosecution. And then the other one is revoked, and basically other penalties are, you can, uh, hear in your book, a permit, or this would be reduced or called long. In that subsections. So I don't know if you guys have a different feel for how, maybe this, again, we're talking about. How do we go from, they're violating the existing special use permit in some way to correcting it or punishing?
Something with teeth?
Well, and that's, the question always is, in this instance, you've got two zones of brevity, one being a criminal side, which would be you're violating.
Specific things.
Yeah, specific things, you know, technically if you're violating zoning, um, ordinance, it is, could be penalized in that manner. Um, it's pretty rare, in my experience, that, you know, any just violent or county goes out and criminally prosecutes somebody for violation unless it's a real hazard, conflict, right? Being, just because you, your driveway's three D two wide, isn't necessarily, you run where you go that direction, but. And, and your other course is equitable civil, which means that you have the right to revoke your permit in full, and then it would be an abandonment, reclamation type of property, which is pretty common. Instead, penalties should just be, pound of money, leave the office, build a thousand acre facility. So, you know, and it's, and that's kind of within bounds of you guys in the planning condition. It's not really a lawsuit in court, it's administrative. Right, so, they violated some way the material, it's reported, and it comes either planning mission of you guys, maybe that, if you want to flesh that out, you don't have to.
Right, so, I mean, the, the point would be at, at any point during construction, there, we're gonna have somebody who is gonna be on this job site monitoring these things. That individual needs to be able to report that somewhere that has the ability to stop all whatever construction, get the problem fixed, um, how that plays out.
Yeah, and that would probably be, I mean, we, we need to flesh that out more because right now, you're more, it's, to my mind, it's more reactive than that, it just means what do you do if they're not complying, stop work is a difficulty in that you're getting a contract between the owner, the operator, the owner and the contractor. And you're not, you're not a party in the contract.
Right.
So you're saying, you know, regulatory compliance problem is in there and all that stuff, but I'm anticipating, but, am I anticip- am I concerned with the obvious ones that are, you know, they know they're doing the wrong thing, I'm trying to think of those head cases that always come up that are wishy-washy, and then you guys go in there and say, stop. What kind of, what kind of exposure do you guys have if you do that? Because the contractor says, I have a contract, these guys don't have a contract, I don't have to do anything, tell me to correct. I, I do what the owner does, or the engineer does. And then you're kind of only then focusing on owner, engineer, so you're saying owner, engineer, you can't do X because you, this is the plan, it says you can't do X. And maybe the right county is out of it now. Right? So if you, if you go on and stop construction, then that third party that comes in and says you're interfering with my contract. You're counting on the fact that you're saying to the owner only, this is a matter between you and the county and operator, this is our permit, that's what's between us, regulations and permit are here, we're here, you're there, that's all this has to do with. We don't care if the contractor can do whatever they want, technically. But we're stopping, we're stopping you.
Right.
That, that's just the, you gotta have that kind of blind zone about how that sort of, that transaction can work.
And so is that effective?
Well, it's, it's got some reason to it, I'll tell you that much.
It's got some what?
Reason to it, I mean, that's the, the, everybody's got an interest in, I mean, obviously, if they've started and they've gone through the process and they have a plan and they've done all the hoops to get there, they have the best of the life, but the owner operator is the best of the life to get to that point. So, you would think that at that point, they would be very interested in complying with everything other than something that is just completely out of bounds, right? Because they have a chance, I mean, if, if your, if your guy sister says, I'm looking at this page of the plan, and you guys did a soils plan, said you're using stockpile and topsoil over here, and you're not putting it in the ditch and washing away. That's, I mean, it just seems to me that at that point, the, you know, it's so obvious that the owner operator needs to step in, and they would have a right because they're the ones who create the contract between those.
The contract.
And they can say, contractors, look at our specs, the specifications say whatever we're putting in this.
But we should, we should have the authority to step in and say to the contractor, okay, hold up here, because you are not following the plan that was agreed upon in order to get special use permit.
I think what Todd's saying is, we don't have to agree with them, we have to.
I, I understand that.
So it would be like, you know, if you hired Bob Smith's excavator mountain worker, and they weren't doing the right thing at the road, and Scott would have to deal with you, because you hired him, not the excavators.
But we would still, to me, the county would still have the obligation and the authority to step in and say, stop, because we need to get this hammered out, so don't do anything else, let's get all three together and go from there. I don't see that, you know, because otherwise, they're just gonna look at you like, we don't care, and keep going.
Hey, if I make, um, my son-in-law's an architect and he builds a lot of properties, and I'm always asking about the construction company, he runs the whole show, we need to communicate directly to the person that is over everything, running the whole show, that like the project manager or whatever, those situations, and that's who we would go to and say, look, this is happening here, you need to stop, I, I see the scenarios and everything. But here's, here's the situation too, a criminal's situation that I view it as, you gotta have a point person, but in case there's something criminal going on to go to, but that person's not there in five years, but something else happens, you really can't go at one particular entity or person you would go to, uh, let me rephrase that, one person you go to the business that owns it, there's an issue going on, and, and from a criminal standpoint, now, if you got some guy over there doing something really out of the ordinary, doing some type of destruction, you could go after that person. But from the standpoint of the project manager, the architect, whoever, the engineer in charge of doing that, that's who I think you would go to first and say, look, this is happening over here, this ditch is creating erosion, hypothetically speaking. So, that's why I would.
Yeah, that, I think there's always that outer limit that says that somebody, an individual is completely out of, you know, sink and doing things that are nimble, and, you know, you at least have that conversation with the contractor, and you say, what's going on with this thing, and they say, I don't know, I'm sorry, this has, you know, whatever. I mean, that's always there, you know, it's endangering people or whatever, and I'm, and I think that's probably the question I think for this purpose is to figure out if you guys really want to have a hand over the contract. But I think that takes a change in this mentality a little bit, because, you know, the, and, and I'm just putting, my tendency in this is to say always, who is the, who are the parties that we're dealing with that are in agreement or subject to the regulation? Well, I don't think. Who are subject to the regulation are the owner and the operator and the permit holder, however they're organized, it's never, it's it's not employees, it's not really contractors, it's those people.
Yes, and I, I agree with what you said there, but I'm still going back to the fact that if our third party comes up and says, you know, callskates, says, hey, we got this going on, and according to the sub, it's supposed to be done like this, they should be able to stand, step in and say, okay, stop right there, don't do it anymore, let's get the owner operator involved, whoever, but you're not gonna move another piece of dirt until we get everything straightened out here, because you might cause tens of thousands of dollar damage, taller damage than if you, you know, let's get it straightened out now. See what I'm saying, I mean, I don't wanna hand you the contract, no, that's, I get careless enough to contract.
I understand that, I'm, I'm sorry. The danger is that you are, at that point, taking action that could be labeled interference with that contract. I mean, if you're wrong, and you're not, and the county's not privileged to regulate that conduct, then you, and you cause that, then you're opening yourself up to.
Okay.
That contractor saying, I, I don't have an agreement with you, you know, these are what, my, my book is the con, is the contract I signed with the engineer specifications on it. And then I point right there to what the specifications are. And that's what I'm doing, if you're telling me to stop, and you're costing me, you know, money and time, and if they're right, you guys, you guys are the problem.
So then.
Quite a texture.
Some of our third party would have to go to, uh, whatever entity they sign, sign the sub, and they would have to then, you're, you're just putting more and more layers in there, in my opinion, you're just putting more and more layers in there that to be able to go through in order to try to fix something that is, that is being done incorrectly.
And, and my answer to that is you're going to the very person who's dealt with you from the beginning, who you sat, you know, wherever, and hashed out the special use permit, and you say, you know, the only thing we can do here is we can call this permit, because you're not complying. And then that, they have every interest at that point, to go to the guy who's doing whatever, and figuring out where, what disconnect is. Right, did they get the specifications wrong? Maybe, maybe, maybe the engineers didn't do, you know, didn't put the grading plan together right. And the contractor was right, because he was looking at everything he was doing. And, and that puts, you know, the person who has the financial interest and the regulatory interest are one right there, did this done. So I don't see how, if I'm, if I'm sitting there as the owner and operator of property, and I'm building, I'm, you know, whatever is the multimillion dollar you have, and somebody's grading plan is off, I'm not totally interested, right in there getting the bottom of it fixed and, and not letting anything get out of hand. And I, I could, I mean, the only other thing I could think of is that, and the interest here is a question of what, how is the county has an entity harmed if they're not complying in some way? Or is causing damage to roads, I mean, I see it if you say, well, they're, they're causing damage to roads. I mean, there's a little bit more distance if you're talking about, well, are they not keeping their soils intact?
That one, that's the point I'm getting at, if they are not following the.
Regulations.
The regulations of the sub, and they're not following the plan that they have laid out to to satisfy the sub, right? Isn't it the county's responsibility to step in then and say, well, stop, wait, let's get this straightened out now? Rather than, I, you know, I, that's where, that's where I'm coming from, I don't see where the disconnect is there, because if you have, if you had a a city inspector that came in and said, no, stop, you're not doing any more work. Where, where's the, and, and, because the city inspector does not have, the contract is between a homeowner and a contractor. But the city inspector can come in and not, they don't go to the homeowner, they go to the contractor, and say, stop, wait, we gotta, we gotta get this straightened out. So where is the disconnect there if, if our engineer comes in and says, you know, look here, and here's what we've got here, this is, this is the plan that was laid out by the contracting entity, okay? You're not following that, where, where's the disconnect, I mean, I'm not, I'm not following that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that that speech is going to one, one of two parties, owner operator, the holder of the permit, and I think probably, I mean, I've never had that come up in any of my settings about the inspector, calling a halt to what a contractor is doing. And, so, I'm not quite sure how I square that with what I know, because, the only thing I can think of is, is that, you know, involvement of a contractor and a home, they're usually involved contractor first, giving plans to the homeowner. And that, so it's kind of all their work, homeowner doesn't know how plumbing works, plumber does. Plumber gives, gets his permit, what he's gonna do, and there's no point in talking to the landowner because they don't know what they're talking. I mean, imagine that, that you tell the, the landowner that, I'm going to stop your, your plumber from working because he's violating the rules.
Because that's kind of where I'm getting at right here, though, I don't, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue any of that, but I just don't, I don't quite follow that, that we would not have the authority to step in and, and tell the contractor, wait, you're not following the plan that was. "Wait, because you're not following the plan that was laid out that your boss agreed to. So let's stop until we get it all straightened out."
And, and, and I think probably my end response to that is I'm being overly solicitous of a conflict between you and somebody, with county and somebody doesn't have an agreement on the scale of a multimillion dollar contract.
Do we put in something into this, into the raise that specify that you have, if, if the county, or if our engineer decides or finds that you're not upholding your end, that you have X amount of days to get this straightened out? Or we will shut down the project? That would be going to the owner, operator, and there will be a fine of X amount of dollars per day? I mean, how, how do you handle that?
Um, well, I, I think that doesn't bother me a bit if you're saying that the case is going for the owner of the property. Now, this, so I think what my question kind of goes back to is, does the county have another interest that it is pursuing other than the permit? So that's what I think. Yeah.
Collaborating that.
But I mean, like, is what they're doing damaging public property or causing harm of some nature? Meaning there's a, there's a violation on the property of the plan that doesn't have, that no one could, you ask the inspector or inspector, "What's this doing, uh, what's this doing to the county? Is it damaging the road and eroding soils in it? The watershed and blocking creeks with stuff or, or what?" And he says, "No, it doesn't do any of that." It, it's just, you know, this is not what, what they said and, and it's gonna be a little bit different. You, and I'm trying to get something to latch on to as far as what is the county's interest in enforcing that against the contract?
Okay.
I, it's fully within us, going to the permit holder, whoever that is, is saying, whatever it says, stop, you know, stop doing it or do it. Here's, here's the contractor again who's out there. And what I'm getting is I think I could write something that says essentially, if what is going on in the construction process is damaging public property or harming any of the interests that you outlined in this thing, then we can halt construction. But I don't want to go so far as to say, if you're just in violation of the permit that we've checked. See what that's thinking is?
No, I don't. No, seriously, no, I'm, 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 I don't, I don't see that. I don't like that. I feel that if, if we are writing these regulations, okay? No, it's not necessarily damaging public land, but it is our, it is our responsibility to make sure that they are constructing this within the guidelines of the plan that everybody, contractor included, should have agreed to, correct? Am I, am I wrong in saying that?
No, you're completely right in saying that.
Okay. So then, in order to make sure that we are protecting the county's interest, and when I say the county's interest, I'm talking about participating, non-participating people just really don't give a damn. I want to make sure that we have some leg to stand on to be able to go in and say, "Nope, wait. Look at this. Here's what we've got here. You know, you're supposed to be doing it in this way according to plans." I realize plans change, but if plans change, they should have some, we should have some recourse to come back and say, "Hey, guys, you know, over here in this 300 feet, we can't, we can't do it right here. We need to, you know, change it just a little bit." Okay, I can get that. But if we're just not following it because we don't think we need to, maybe their specs are different, like you said. That's, that's perfectly intended also. But until we get the entities together to discuss that, it needs to be stopped. Because if, if they're working a weekend, we can get ahold of whatever entity, uh, so they've got three days, you're gonna work on it. Which is gonna be more of a, more of a headache to take care of. I'm still saying we need to protect the, the county's interest, not necessarily the public lands because it's, it's not that. I'm just looking at the county interest as far as following everything that they're supposed to be following. If there's supposed to be, if there's a variance in the, in the plans they need to have, then they should have come beforehand and, and said, "Hey, look, we gotta do this."
And the only, the only heartburn I'm having with that is, is that, you know, in, in that analysis, my, my gut still comes to that issue of the, the relationship to county, the contractor versus county and the permit.
So to me, it seems like a furnace, I mean, it seems like it, could be.
If, if whoever we hire, whatever engineering firm, and that individual's on site and he is watching what's going on, he says that fences, uh, he's pulled some measurements, he goes, "Hey, you know what? Fences are far enough away," uh, based on those calculations. If his contact person with the person who issued the permit is not available, uh, then they're gonna be subject to stopping the entire project because we have the authority to pull their permit.
Mm-hmm. And that's, and that's all between us, the inspector and the permit holder?
That's correct. And so if, if, if contractor, all the different contractors that could be on a project like this, I don't want our guy dealing necessarily directly with them. I want a contact person, I like what Dan said, job site superintendent, that's the individual you'll be in contact with, he understands that, okay, if this isn't handled within whatever period of time, then we have the authority to pull.
Okay. How about this? Make it a condition of the permit that if there's non-compliance, you can halt construction. And that's directly to-
We can-
But you're not talking to the contractor, you're talking to the permit holder.
Correct, right.
It's just, it's just an explicit remedy that doesn't, you know, doesn't direct you to go to the contractor. Ultimately, I think you could halt it that way, if you could. So, you know, X amount of Z. And, and that individual has to know that they have the authority. Look, hey, did you realize that contractor B is not putting the fence far enough away or they haven't done this based on how we understand? And then if he says, "That's just the way we're gonna do it, doesn't matter," uh, then that's when he can have a little more initiative and say, "Okay, just be aware that I'll be asking to pull your, your sub."
And backing up what Keith said, let me back up my notes. We had discussed this previously. The key word is umbrella that I wrote. Special use permit holders, umbrella, all energy companies, they're, they're the holders.
Yeah.
And mustn't.
Yeah, and that, that isn't changing at all in this. It's just that we've got a separate, they're assuming that they are not the ones actually moving dirt. But, but our, the, the concept here is that we need to directly be able to halt work if, as part of the permit process.
But we go to them first.
Yep. And then if they violate that and they're going crazy, then we're probably courting them. So, at that point, you can ask for injunction.
So I guess most operators and most contractors, they want to do things correctly. Uh, in my experience with them, you know, working with them down there, uh, if they're, if they're screwing up something up, you know, that's not right, you know it's not right, they appreciate the heads up to say, you know, "Hey, look, this is not the way that this should be done. It should be done this way." So I'm just saying, I, I, I would go to the owner, operator and say, whoever contacted person there. But most contractors would appreciate heads up saying, "Hey, look, this is, this is according to this." You know, you might look at that.
Yeah, I still, I still think you need to allow whoever hired those subs to make that contact. So if it's, if it's BD, it's some, whatever, whoever it is, that individual's on site's gonna, gonna reach out or find the job site form superintendent and say, "Hey, here's what I'm saying. You need to go and, and take care of this." And-
And that, that's where I'm about, going to the general and saying, you know, "Look,"
Yeah.
Not, but I'm talking about the general contractor, not necessarily the owner, operator.
Yeah, I disagree. I guess I disagree because the general contractor, if he isn't, if he isn't working, uh, doesn't have a special use permit with us, you're, you, you need to walk the food chain to get to the person who's stopped and take, take care of that.
If there's one, if there's one party who undoubtedly can tell the contractor what to do and when, you know, is gonna be the owner, operator.
Correct.
Slash operator. And that's, I think what we're getting to is kind of a bit of a nuanced ad to this that says that that, we're, we're making sure that that has the right attention.
And, and I agree with what you guys are saying a hundred percent. But what you don't understand is on the job site. If you have the general there, the general is the general. He is, he is contracted with the owner, operator, okay?
Yeah.
But the general is the one that's responsible for everything on the job site. So i- if I go again and say, "Hey, your fencing company's, you know, putting the fence in 50 feet too far here. You need to look at that." He goes, "Okay, well, we'll look at that." And then if he says, "Well, you know, we don't really think so." That's what you go on the food chain. But you have to, you have to contact the general before, you know.
And, and I, I don't know that I see a difference in some respects in that with the general. I mean, if you're going, he's viewing something, if your inspector is viewing something, seeing something wrong. And I, I think there is kind of an informality to go to the contractor and say, "Hey, what's going on? You know, I'm looking at my book. Who says, what's your book, sir?" And then if his book says the same thing and he doesn't, and then maybe it is, hopefully it is something where, "Oh, my gosh, I just completely spaced out. Let's move it." Then you've obviously done a service to the county. But if he says no, then it's right up to that-
And that's when you go up to the owner, operator and say, "Look, this is what we got. This is what's happening. Either correct it or hold it."
I don't have any problem with that. The problem I have is somebody saying, at that stage, the inspector's saying, he's saying, "I, I don't think this is with the plan." And the other guy says, "Oh, it's with the plan. So I'm okay with it." Or whatever. And then the guy says, "Stop." Right there when you say, "Stop," things go to, and look, if he goes, if, if we say, the inspector guy says, "Okay, well, I'm gonna go talk to the permit holder and tell him blah, blah, blah," that's good. And then permit holder says, "Yeah, I think, I, it's-"
Yeah. And, and they're, they're, okay, so we're, we're getting, we're on the same page here because like I say, you can't just go to the owner, operator and say, "Hey, they're doing this." Go to the general who is on site, who is over all of these umbrella companies that are out there. And that's, that's the best way to handle it, in my opinion.
It's kind of a duty to defer.
Yes.
Before you, before you launch.
Yes.
This is exciting. Yeah, you're fine. Okay. Um, hmm. I think we're, I think we're gonna reset for lunch at this point in time. Um, right, right? We'll be back here at, uh, one o'clock. We can go ahead and, uh, point the names or crush others. You want to be the voting delegate at K Camp, for K Camp at the annual meeting?
Annual meeting where?
The annual meeting?
Oh, the annual meeting, yeah.
Keith? Daniel was last year. Up to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mark Perle would be the official and I'll be the, uh, I mean, you ever have a beard cut?
We got it.
Here, if you want.
Mark, fill out. As soon as the whiskey drop, you know, they're gonna give you.
This, Kurt didn't call and say it wasn't an entity. Do you want me, Todd, to reach out to, um, the attorney from the legislature to find out what the process would be for the hospital?
Yeah, I don't have any.
And anybody there that talks since, so I've got, I've got his email here. So I'll send a, an email for him, to him, just asking, how does the process work if we're going to ask for a quarter for Sam for, uh, on the, and then he can initiate or something. You want me next week? Fourteen stones?
Yeah, I'll be on the fifteen.
Three.
That's the year.
Well, she won't have one of the fourteen. I'll be here every time.
You'll stay? Hey, Kurt?
Hello.
Kurt, how are you?
Yeah.
If you get some rain, I'd be excellent.
I, I would agree.
I'm, I'm tired of moving raindrops every five minutes. Yeah, but the harvest is in full session. But that, that's not harvest stuff?
It would.
I'm harvesting anything.
It's good by myself.
Well, it would help because that would even get your fields on the earth.
That's, that's good, Kurt. Oh, you're voting, yeah, I'm good.
Marcus.
I'm the one there. Okay. You're changing. That's good. That's fine. Yeah, that's what I get, what I get. I'm tired of it.
I think I'll vote for it.
I don't have a lot. I just, a few updates on the building was the main thing. And then add some stuff about contracts and stuff I wanted to discuss with you. But, okay. Um. Uh, the, all of the stalls got put in. They look real excellent. Uh, the founder got those installed last week. Uh, got, uh, um, should be this week. Electrical will be done. Uh, and I'm hoping they can back and be followed right behind them. Uh, so we're, we're at the final, uh, final race of, uh, getting this thing completed. Um, the, the last real big hoop will be getting the rest of the gravel there and getting the parking lot finished. For, uh, so coordinating that. Scott, whenever, uh, whenever we meet that, um.
Did you say per stall? Would you say per stall?
It's a stalls.
Oh, the, the, yeah, the back part is per stall. Um, and then, uh, just gotta have, uh, the, uh, once everyone's finished, we'll do a final deep clean and then, um, we, tenth, we are checked from the tribe.
Okay.
And we will go about and we're gonna purchase, uh, tables and chairs found through, uh, I think Sam's love of this.
I think Sam's, Sam's love is very decent.
You're right. And they were, and they were the nice, white, molded plastic ones, not the, you know, the metal ones. And, and.
And remind me again, the check from the tribe was something that you, that friends of Banner Creek had applied for through them.
Yeah, for their charitable foundations.
Yeah.
Yep. And so they were nice enough to give us the sum of almost seven thousand dollars. So, okay. Appreciate it. And, uh, so that's going to pay for a good chunk of our, uh, our, uh, tables, chairs, that we did that, we'll pay for. And then, thank the money, be able to get the fridge out of that, too. So.
Oh, you found one? Get the fridge?
Yeah, they had, they had one found out. Uh, I had no issues with it. And, uh, so I'm hoping for our, uh, we've had good luck now that we have a building and we kinda, you know, we can put on our, our list, uh, you know, this is what we're raising money for now, for our, uh, uh, Jackson County Community Foundation. Uh, we've had really good luck there. And I'm hoping we can, you know, continue to raise some more money. And then fin, out of that, maybe get a nice meter and, uh, and get started for our, the future plans of building a, a, a nice, uh, cover porch on, on the back side of it. Kind of like, is that the heritage chalk?
Yeah.
Where that way you can walk out back, you know, kind of extends it a little bit if it's nice, people can walk out back and then.
What's the newest to cook out there or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, it really is. I think that's the best where I see our next stage two project going with that. And certainly people, they feel so inclined to come out, cause it's, we had a lot of people going out and, uh, checking the building out now that it's done. Um, we, uh, I got, uh, the grass seed drilled in, um, and, uh, we're working on that. Uh, and then now I've been watering it, been watering it. And if you want to thank you about that, you throw some more water. So I tried to save a little money and then, and then by drilling it in, you will not have to go and then get, uh, use the state's drill and.
Oh, yeah.
And it just went, um, six by drill show and it's been doing pretty well. I mean, it covered it up just enough. And then we ran our, our ball drag over it, ball diamond drag. And so I'm optimistic we'll be able to. I mean, I've got five hoses running around trying.
It'll, it'll rain.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Other than that, uh, just, I don't know if we go to executive session for a minute?
For.
I guess we call it contract issues.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Uh, what, forty?
Contract and.
Uh.
Purchase of real estate?
No, I, I guess for.
Equipment.
Equipment.
So is it, we're talking about the, uh, the matter of trade secrets issues for the person who's.
Right.
What?
Uh, amount.
Yeah, you, you.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, sorry, if. Maybe if, if it's a contract between several places and you're wanting to do it once.
No, not, I guess, uh, just more of a, I don't know how to.
Contract labor.
Like.
Is it a contract?
Contracting for a person giving work.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it could, yeah, it could be.
No, let the person know that.
Okay, alright.
So that, that.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
So it involves non-lectured personnel.
Right, right.
Contract labor. Now, I can't, I can't.
Okay, I'm gonna go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matter and non-lectured personnel for now. Five minutes, for five minutes, starting at, uh, one thirteen, and real convenient, one eighteen. Is this location with commissioners, uh, Kurt Negrisi?
Okay.
Mainly the personnel, identify or purchase.
Alright, so we need to, uh, if you'd like to, y'all have a copy of the, uh, Jackson County Land, uh, Planning, Commissioning Rules and Regulations. Okay.
Oh.
Do you wanna go ahead and adopt those?
Did we wanna ask Kate first?
She had, yes.
Go.
Uh, that's what we do, is ask her to double check and make sure she's go to city delivery.
Okay, yeah, if we can get her back down here. Five years. Is there anybody else gonna be a tinker on the lesson today?
Is there?
Uh, no, I think it's just us.
Alright.
Just us.
Alright, well, we're waiting for Kate, and Jackson County Lawn Building Use Club for Y W C A. Northeast Kansas, um. They're actually gonna use, say? Let's be outside.
They don't leave inside for anything.
So. General, the sense is we're all, they're motion approved, they're. Four thousand. You saw them use.
Someone. Second.
Move the second on the pair of say, I'm.
I'm.
And you can be finished after.
No.
I forgot to bring my hair again, stupid.
What?
I got mine back, yeah. So I can hear loud and clear. And then we'll need to have a chamber.
That's it?
Yeah. Uh, tentatively on their. They're not one of the non-list, are they?
No, they're not one of them. They're nonprofit.
We had someone on the list that did not give you that one.
Well, they're not, sorry, you don't have.
Alright. Hi, Kate.
Hello.
Welcome back. Thoughts on the, uh, rules? Here's your chance to light up. Traditions, too. Well, I thought we needed to have. Getting all the diamonds.
I haven't seen anything that was. Kind of, were marrying, I guess?
So you're good with that?
I just, yeah, he is, he's some tools that somebody might go in the line. I don't think he ever had any measures, missing a lot of units, but I did that.
We've actually, we've, in the past, we have, one, two, three, four.
Okay.
So, in fact, um, it says in there, unextinguished, and zoning regulations.
Yeah, and I would say that's still a case. I mean, if somebody says, yeah, I've got, you know, sick or in the hospital or relatives or anything that passes muster, I mean, this is supposed to be repeated, too. It's like, you know, three in a row or whatever, no contact before and nobody.
That would be the thing, is no contact and then there was some.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, you just gotta repeat it, probably. That kind of thing.
I think it's gonna be hard, isn't it?
You know, if somebody says they're sick or something, you know, for and stuff like that, you can, you can adjust, but. Did, uh. Did the, um, gentleman that talked about the people on that application?
He did not.
He did not?
I was supposed to tell you that he's signed on to.
Oh, well, I don't know that he did the sign on, so we just have not turned anything in yet.
But the deadline was Wednesday. So.
And Jamie did talk to him that day.
He said, never sign, say, after some of this, you're gonna be. Give it out when necessary. Alright. I'm disappointed. I thought he was pretty, pretty excited, um. Yeah. Mike, go on, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'm disappointed. He, he thought he was doing it. Anyway. Um.
Um, Terry, she misplaced her application. She's only a few floor. Her term is up in a year. She is gonna fill one out, but it will be Thursday before she.
There was a deadline to that. So it sounds like you guys would like to have some interviews. Do we wanna look at the other ones? Name and then go through who we're gonna interview?
We could, we could.
Okay. Um, probably before we do that, uh, I'm gonna dive right in the, you know, call until one, uh.
Three?
One thirty. Okay, five minutes.
Okay.
Um, so how do you guys wanna move ahead with Mr. Weller?
I, I have said before, I think that he blatantly, uh, tried to circumvent the procedures, the public notice. And after he was asked over time during that meeting and still went ahead with it. And I, I don't think that he can be trusted to serve on that board, either board.
Okay. So, Nate?
Well, I wanna ask the attorney if this process is, the process that we can use to go forward with this, that we're, within our.
Well, what I would suggest to you guys is that thi- this thing is, is, the general regulations, so it needs to be approved and passed.
Right.
I'd like, I think I'd like a little leerspace between the passage and what are actually to take.
Sure.
Um, just so it's not, you know, you're not gonna, I mean, it's stuff with things and, and I think it's important. I bet that's just it, you know, pass this this week or next week and then we get the, the.
When is your, when is your next meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday, that's the thing. The next meeting that has to do with the oratorics is Thursday.
Yeah, I'm fine, I, I guess me personally, I'm fine with that. So let's, we'll pass this and he can go to the next meeting and, then we'll, uh, if we wanna put this, uh, topic in discussion for next week, we can.
I want to really hop into session for next week.
Okay, so they noticed the, uh, uh, need more terms over something? What was, uh?
The wind again.
Oh, okay. The moratorium for wind, that was not housed, it was added too.
Correct.
And then housed, which was a violation.
Yeah.
Of the.
And there was no notice of this, that, that something was added on.
Correct.
No, well, see, he violated public trust by doing that. He violated our trust by doing that. Uh, and I, I don't, uh, think that he could be, I don't think he was self-aware in fact, like him.
Um, I would have a motion to approve the Jackson County, Kansas Rules and Regulations, Jackson County, Kansas Planning Commission.
So we.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time.
Okay.
That has been passed. We will talk about this in full position next week. Therefore, we will pass this number fifty, so the other applicants, you guys can warn others. We'll look at those, um, and we vote for air. We at least have one position that is open currently on zoning planning.
Possibly.
There may be two, maybe three. Um, just depends on what happens.
It's, I don't know, it was a motion for such.
It's just, uh, we're on the way, so.
Okay. Um. You, you've signed it already? Somebody's signed it. I guess I, someone's cooking, so I'll add that in.
Nate? She's always ready. Here, the other one of these, sorry.
I did.
Sure. I bear all the weight. Anything else?
Yeah. The, the new resolution for the amended zoning rights.
Mm-hmm.
That little section in there that was removed. You know what I'm talking about in this week, last week? So, did you guys decide if that's, just that portion of it's getting published or was referred that to time? Okay.
The amended zoning rights.
Took like, under two minutes. The resolution portion of it, that got published had, I don't have a copy of it, I think. That first paragraph had five, six words taken out of it. The use regs on Article seven, three, eight, or twenty, everything did not get.
That's the.
Over. So there was a little portion in that first paragraph that had some language in there, kind of about that, but it didn't have it in the rest of it.
Okay. So it didn't come out.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, whatever is the, the one that's primary now.
Beautiful. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Yeah, that would be, just the resolution.
Do you think it would publish that?
Nope, you would say, you could say in there, well, it adds something to this, it, that's a, so, maybe you should add in all exhibits are available, public and persons.
And there would be a quality of that, some, sort of, and. And Cora, can I sit in on that?
Absolutely, sure. And anybody else? This pop one, this, uh, some.
Dave, I wanna say there because that's where the, the.
Oh.
The native video thing, right, and people.
Off tomorrow, so.
Pop one.
So that'll be.
Boogie.
Man, uh, they won one of those.
Heard it?
What? I, I got the end up, sir. Same thing, just with flies. Oh, right way out. Oh, right way out. All right, see if we can get this running. All right. Well, I might just stand up because you guys are ordering to... I have four more resolutions.
Okay.
And this is, uh, obviously it's supposed to be a learning situation, so, uh, I'm gonna talk, if you guys can raise your hands or shout, whenever you need to, if you have a question. But, I mean, my intent here is to, I think in, in the sense that you guys, everybody can read, you know, kinda your articles or your government manuals about how you comply with this stuff and what you're doing. My intention here is actually go a bit deeper into the understanding of why you're doing what you're doing. Because there is an underlying reason for all of this, and that's what we're asking for, is, is why. I've probably quoted too much Chesterton as a thing about, it's called Chesterton's fence. Says if somebody comes and proposes removing events, then we should come up with all the rules about why it should stay before you're... And that's what we're trying, it's called second order thinking, you think about why somebody's there, not just that. And now we're gonna be talking about that with that plot in mind, so... Okay, do is subject to coma. And this is actually from the statute, and I highlighted words in here because this is gonna be the work we're doing. Talking about here generally is how do you determine if a body that's meeting is actually a public body and not something else. I mean, just because the county clerk and the zoning administrator and, and, uh, somebody else gets together and talks, does that mean it's well a meeting? Well, the answer is no, because you gotta talk about what the statute sets and says, all meetings, conduct and affairs of, and the transaction of business by all legislative and administrative bodies and agencies of the state and political and tax and subdivisions thereof, including boards, commissions, authorities, councils, committees, subcommittees, and other supporting groups thereof, receiving or expending, and supported in whole or in part by public funds, shall be open to the public. So it's a long definition, but you've got some commonality there that's made straightforward in some respects. You've gotta be a legislative or administrative body, I mean, you have to have some authority to make a legislative or administrative decision that is not made above you. And somebody doesn't tell you that. And public funds are important, because if you're not supported by public funds, then it's not a governmental agency. And, and get together, and this is a meeting, so you're looking at all these things together to get the definition, and that's stretched poorly. They've come up, the case law's come up with applied parts. And it's just what we've read there, almost, uh, word for word. It says first, the group of people leading together must be a body or agency under the act. So what they intend to be body are as many as you guys. Your elected officials, an legislative official capacity, therefore you are a body or agency. And that would include state agencies. But it doesn't include people who you employ, the county employees, just because they employ them. Second, the group must have legislative or administrative powers or is legislative or administrative as a method of conduct. So, I mean, that's important because part of what you're getting here in the exceptions to the meetings being open is because you have a, a part that's open to the public, because the public has input to view directly through voting booth and other members, kind of direct what you're doing, and they need to have that input to see what you're doing. At the level of con- contact that they have, I mean, elected representatives, official body, that they can interact. So that's why, that's the idea there. The body must be part of a governmental entity at the state or level level with a governmental body or subordinate. So, again, governmental is aspects. And obviously that includes a number of ends. But also you guys can delegate authority, obviously. You can create recreation commissions, special districts, some places have their authority issues. All those little details, if you delegate that legislative authority or administrative authority to you in a direct way, and is still responsive because it's a board or a body, that's still subject to the act. Cause you're, you're basically saying, we're, we're, you take this recreation stuff and we make all the decisions. And we don't wanna hear about it, a bull crew made the budget over here, but you've got that authority. And that way people can have that open meeting activity at that meeting, where the power is, is designated to. It must receive or spend public funds or be a subordinate group to a body that receives public funds. So, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory. Again, public funding obviously means that there's responsibility to the public, so that's why it should be there. Doing the main thing is spending tax money or public money. Finally, it must be supported in whole or part by public funds or be a supporting group of a body which is financed by public funds. So, same explanation there, because it's public funds, you have to be, you have to... So a little trick of this, and this is important for your zoning planning, is if you're deciding something, this body or planning decision is decided something quasi judicial capacity. That is not subject to deliberations. So the example would be in a case where you have a request, zoning change requires a determination according to statute or whatever, that is a quasi judicial determination. That should be designated by statute, and then you can, if you want, basically turn it to an executive session, cause it's not listed on the list that I'm handing out. And that's why it's a trick, because when you do a quasi judicial function, when you decide something at that level, it's a different setup in legislative or administrative sides. And you're basically acting as a judge, in some respects, of specific fact pass or specific request. So somebody comes in and says, I want this variance, and it triggers here. And they give their evidence, and some, you do notice, everybody has come in there and they've said their piece to you will pose it. Because that decision needs to be protected from public scrutiny, you can go into an executive session for quasi judicial purposes or deliberation regarding the decision, and keep that confirmation.
But the decision itself cannot be made in the executive session, you have to come back out, but I just wanna make sure that was clear. You have to come back out to make any decisions.
Yeah, and if you have, a lot of these times they'll involve reasons like golden factors, you have to go through a list of things that says, you know, this is, you think this, you think this, and you think that, you think these marks. That would have to be still discussed and decided and voted on in the open session. All you're doing is letting people in that closed session, argue freely about what they think. I mean, they can say something that they, you know, if they were in an open session, they would be shy about saying, you know. Maybe this, this guy has violated the rules ten times over, or, you know, maybe they wouldn't wanna say that. But that open meetings aspect doesn't attach to that because you've gotta give that space. I mean, if you guys get something like that, you'll know it, but in the same respect, if there's a decision that's made in quasi judicial capacity, you can take that time out to frankly discuss it. Again, we're getting kind of the why of these things, we've got the feel, we've got governmental agency, public funds, and we've got these concepts of legislative or administrative action linked to being in an open meeting. This is just a summary of what we covered, that I tried to still down, try to make it simple sense. And I'm attorney, so I can't do that, so I'll do this. A governmental body or agency with administrative legislative powers and supported by public funds, meeting for the purpose of business, conduct, affairs of that body or agency. Hit those, you know, you need to have an open meeting. Don't, you don't need to. Okay. What is a meeting? So this is that eternal question about standing Walmart, he's standing Walmart, looking at his wrenches. Up comes Mark and says, hey, how you doing? Is that a meeting? Nope, right, good, good answer.
No, no business discussed.
Yes. So, call sergeant everybody, I'm gonna recommend you guys go to talk class, the AG's office, appreciate it. Okay, but we'll get to grind through it, get some messy way out. As using the means act, meeting, this is a statutory definition, so it's not straight from the book. Meeting is any gathering or assembly in person or through the use of telephone or any other meeting in the interactive communication by a majority of the membership of a public body or agency, subject to this act, for the purpose of discussing the business or affairs of a public body or agency. So, and, and, and there was a change in there, I said, what is a meeting not forum or majority? And if you guys are as old as I am, you remember that, that section used to have forum. It didn't have majority of the government body, which is significant for councils and boards that have more than three guys. You guys don't really have enough numbers to make that a reality, but in this instance, you get people's, some people divert the forum concept, it's not, you just look through the entire body and then there's a majority. So, if you're guys' case, two of you will be a majority. So this is what you brought up, the purpose of business.
Question.
Would that go with any other board?
Yeah.
So, no matter what, so give me an example, how many are on the plan issue? Seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Six right now.
Six right now. Okay, so a majority of every body, if you just say, let's go with six, then it has to be three people together.
And if those three people are together and having a discussion?
Yeah, but if they're just three of them, they can have another discussion they want, it's not, it's not a majority. Because they're not a majority. If there was four of them, as soon as they got together, then you could resist and get the segment on business affairs, but that's just sheer numbers game. And that majority of, of every body makes, changes that because it used to be majority of forum. Which forum, in that instance, before, majority of forum could have been three, so we get, right? So right there were three people, in one situation, three people's meeting, it's another thing.
So right there's where you run into problems in smaller entities, smaller cities, counties, things like that. Because, I mean, you know, we're in, in a Walmart, like I said, you know, you stand there and BS for a while, and then you go on down the line, oh, we're not talking business, and they say, how you doing, what's going on, and that's what...
And that's the, and that's, the second part of this is important, is what you said, is discussing for the business affairs of a body. So, you can not believe the stuff from that body just being this room and not talking about the business affairs of a body.
High price of bananas.
Yep?
The price of those bananas.
Yep.
Can I ask one? We kinda have a hybrid situation out here, just on the edge of the city limit, it's in the counties. They've got HOA part of it, but the county also takes care of part of the road. Now, I don't know the area that the county takes care of, but those citizens living out in that area, that the residents, if they're part of the HOA, I think they are. Um, if an HOA receives any county services, such as snow removal or things like that, are they then subject to opening?
I don't think so. I've never had an HOA that I thought was, was... Because they don't really hold the government, the government authority.
Even though they receive services?
They receive money services, but they're not taking the money that they give them through. Or they're not regulating, they don't have the ability to, especially if they've got rules that they can enforce, but those are simple deporsals. Meaning they can enforce it in this port here, but they can't call up the police and say, maybe I gotta take that basketball with me. So, I, I, yeah, I don't think they, they don't meet the definition as a good example of why, you know, why they don't.
And have actual money and a physical.
Well, I think you gotta have that combination. I mean, the first, are, are they some way government? If you guys had appointed, like, or they were instead of HOA, they were, um, uh, you know, that's a term I think. They had a, a procurement district. And you guys, or the, they were created by statute. I don't know if you created a procurement district by statute.
We used to have, we used to have an economic development corporation.
Yeah.
Multi-county, reappointed. That would have been something that they could use, public funds, or decisions, that would have been something.
Yeah, so that's kind of the idea.
Okay.
So, and that's kind of the meaning of the other governmental body or support for it, just means that if you're not for that governing body, that's just employees, it's clerk, it's approved, then we're not gonna have an open meeting. Question. Uh, this is kind of, you know, I gave you the outs, now what do you still have to do? What do you still have to watch in the day to day stuff? And you've probably heard of it before, but I'm gonna go over the ministry. First of all, don't reply to all emails or texts. That's that interactive communication part of the statute. You guys probably had a good depends, but it's, it's that, it's a problem because that can be the interactive communication, and you innocently reply to all, and it just starts at length. So, it's just best not to, not to give it the temptation. Here's something that I see happening, um, I hate to do it, but don't beat disgusting before beating. It's gonna be obvious, but I've got cities that will gather around me for the new services or chat.
About, about business.
About business. The same thing after the meeting. Again, it's kind of, that adjournment means something. Public business is over, it's not even, it's not gonna patch it out anymore.
Right.
And, you know, that just, it, it makes it better to have clarity anyway. And then my final point, this is probably my real vision here. I kinda like to give this as a warning, whenever possible, schedule other meetings during open meeting. I mean, special meetings or adjournments and stuff like that, because really what you're trying to do, and this is a trick I have constantly helping people through, is that, let's say there's no forum. What, and, and the meeting's coming up and you know you don't have the forum. What do you do? But you gotta get some stuff done the next day, or, you know, after, next day, if everybody's available, but it's not a regular meeting. So what do you do? At first, that day, if you just have somebody, one of you three, and you're the only one available, you can come in here and say, it's nine o'clock in the morning, it is the start of a big meeting. I'm calling the meeting over, and I'm, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, you know, I don't order it to tomorrow at nine o'clock. So, you fulfill the requirement because of the open meetings act, cause everybody who wanted to be notified of what, when and where the meeting is, adjourned to or where it's going or what's happening, they were sitting there, they should have been sitting here at nine o'clock, listening to it. And they did, and they know that it's adjourned tomorrow. Right, and you could do that without calling a special meeting, but it's during the meeting, same thing, special meeting. Sort it out here, and then everybody has their notice and follow-up and regular notice too. If they weren't here, then you got people here to see it. So you can adjourn, we, you can adjourn to the next day. And if it's just one of you, but you gotta do it on date and time at the start of the meeting. And that's just, that, that just gives you that issue of people who want to be notified of what's happening, have them in that meetings.
You open first, then you adjourn?
Yeah.
And so if Mark and I have come, and can come in, Keith, you come in and say, we're opening this at nine o'clock, or adjurming at nine o'clock, we'll be in tomorrow, say that.
I'm calling and adjurting at nine o'clock.
Okay.
And if you, if it's like a plan of mission, you've only got two people there, then you do motion, move, adjourn tomorrow. Second, vote, two favor, done. And then that's it.
No, like, with voting committee, if they don't have the forum, and they're there, and there are people there, they cannot conduct business, but they can have a workstation during that time?
No, no, I, I think if you have a regular meeting set on date and time, if you don't have a forum, you can't conduct any business.
Right.
You gotta continue it, you gotta adjurn it, and that's, there's no meeting at that.
Sure. Now, if there's no meeting, but they cannot have a workstation?
I don't think so, no, I think they'd have to, they'd have to notify, they'd have to be a company, they have to notice, that they're having a workstation.
Can you attempt to have a so-called hybrid? Or you have hybrid, what we call, uh, near on A G U, we have to have folks on the, uh, internet calling in to create a meeting.
Yeah, any, any remote communications, as long as they can be heard, and they're here.
So, I can make, Mark, you call in beyond that screen, he and he can conduct business.
Yeah, that's fully allowed, and he's just comfortable with, also you guys do.
Oh, do.
Yeah. Phone, Zoom, that kind of thing. So that was, yeah, that led me to the next point of the session, definition. Interactive communications. Um, except as provided in section twenty-two of Article Two, the Constitution of Kansas, interactive communications in the series shall be open if they collectively involve a majority of the membership of a public body or agency, share a commentative discussion regarding the business affairs of a public body or agency, and are intended by any and all of the participants, reaching agreement on a matter that would require binding action taken by the public body or agency. So this is, this is that rule against, you know, the email issue. You know, they're defining interactive communications to create a system, this is not for a meeting, right? If you're having a local meeting, and two of you there are on Zoom, playing interactive, it's okay, it's not a problem. It's if there's some other system that's going on, and you guys have, you know, contact call between you, um, whatever day, that's an interactive communication, it's a meeting, whatever you do. So, this is just definition, shows you the, you're talking about, again, the business affairs of the body, so you get those two together, and you got a problem. So, that's why, it's not just a rule that you can't contact each other, it's can't contact each other for the business affairs of a meeting. So, pretty straightforward, and we're just trying to keep people from, you know, you know, inappropriately taking those calls and not thinking about it. Okay, executive sessions. We've been through this, but I'm gonna grind through it again. So if you've got a good idea, maybe explain a little bit, we had, we have the checklist now, but, and here's why we've been through these. What are the reasons we can? Personnel matters. I'm not gonna read that one, I'm just gonna say, as you know, we can get technical about that, that's about a specific employee or aggressing employee, it's not about policy. Unless it's about an employee violating, so I mean, if you wanna talk about whether or not you have, you know, what's the payment on law policy, or what are you gonna do about it, how are you gonna change it? That's not, that's not even taking session. It's not a session. You wanna talk about if you're violating, you get policy, but it's personnel, so that's a discussion. Attorney-client privilege discussions. Um, the only, a lot of statistics, the reason that you do this, have privileges, you can't have privilege unless the attorney's person. It's like pressing phone, Zoom, or whatever, but I gotta be around.
Better to get you on the phone before you go into the executive session, that way everybody knows that you're on there. Okay.
And so, that's, you guys got that at the end, so that's not really, it's just, some of that you can call in, people think of, because I'm not sitting here. The weird ones. Discussion relating to acquisition of their property, not to sale or purchase, data relating to financial affairs of secondary parties, that's what I was talking about, trade secrets. I mean, if some entity comes, like giant table, and wants to do something, and they have, you know, proprietary information, or give you about how many people are burnt out last year, they don't wanna emphasize it, come in here and talk about it, and that, this same goes for the sheriff, when he comes in, he's talking about, uh, matter of security, or his techniques, or the way he does certain things. That's an extra one. That's, I'm sorry. Hey, for matter of laws, it's security of the public. So, obviously letting people know when the police are trolling, or their hours, or where their technique. Yeah, where the cameras are, or whatever, is not necessarily a good thing. So, those are your, all your shady reasons you can go conduct a class. Other than the quasi-military trip that we just talked about, hopefully that. Um, you guys know this now, because we've got the checklist of justification, which is statute rule, personnel, attorney-client, whatever, totally for time of session, fifteen minutes, time to reopen the session, or reopen. Place where we open the session. You guys have been very good about that, and if individuals are part of the government body are present, or invited to participate, they must be listening. And I think for purposes, and I've said this, you call in turn for it, it's assumed that.
Sure.
So you don't have to put that. And then, and make sure you don't miss this one, a brief and general description of the subject of this case. Because, you know, you can be very general, employee performance review. Or
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiation, discussion regarding, um, claims against the candidate. That kind of, you don't have to say, lawsuit is just filed, it's just filed. Let's see. Some of those individual rules we're talking about, you gotta keep it to the topic. Can't go to other places, you can't start with what you know, and shift the budget. No action taken in executive session, action must wait until the meeting resumes, wait for session. And that's pretty obvious. I mean, I've seen some places come out and always say, no action taken, or we're reopening the meeting, no action taken. I don't know if that's, apparently, I said, sir, if you feel more comfortable doing that, I don't have a problem, but it's just not one of those things is required. Right? Because, dude, you're pretty obvious, your back open, and you're meeting, and you say, okay, we're gonna vote on, I move this, or second vote, it's obvious that that's a big part of it. So, but you've acted in public, in the public.
One of the big things that I don't see on here that should be noted is if you come out of an executive session early, you sit there for the time, two minutes, five minutes, whatever, and you don't conduct any business, you sit there and look at each other, because if Al Kali went back to the recorder, like she said, you're coming back at nine twenty, and you come out at nine ten, and she's not here, you still cannot conduct business.
Man of my own heart, that, that point there. That's right, if you say when it's coming back in the session, you don't start until that time's up. And that's always something to be waited in, the time you select in the first place. You always extend, you can't short. Um, just a word about agendas. And this is state law too, so it's seventy-five forty-three eighteen. Agendas are not required to be prepared or published following the K S A seventy-five forty-three eighteen, and therefore nothing consists in a lawful event, an amendment to an agenda at the time of the meeting. Which is, this case is stating that. U fifty-eight four oh one versus face, which is Kansas. It doesn't allow change in place and take the time of the meeting, it just says that if you, you don't have to have an agenda, if you make an agenda, that's fine, and you can change it. It's not an open meetings violation to have an agenda in front of you and say, we're changing the agenda today to do this or have these three people in here.
Question on that. Okay, so, if you, uh, the agenda is, we meet the commissioner, right? And we have an overflow crowd, we cannot accommodate everybody, can we move the meeting across the hall? Is that perfectly fine, do you have a long to state that?
Yeah, the motion, the motion would have to be made to adjourn, we need to room, whatever.
Okay.
Then you would, if it's a big room, and everybody's been there, that's fine. But you move through, and then presumably, and everybody who's interested is here, sitting in the room, so they should know what happened. And then, you know, it's a courtesy perhaps to have a sign saying, kind of that sort of, or we moved down to the senior center, or, or whatever, but that's, but they're supposed to be.
Okay.
And that's, uh, just, just know the statute, so that you understand, again, what we're trying to do is apply to this part, is declare your bias against the public policy. This state brings a meeting to be adjourned to another time or place, in order to subvert the policy in an open public meeting as pronounced in subsection. So you guys fulfilled the purpose, because you're an overflow crowd, people are probably not gonna be able to hear what's going on, so you're moving to another location that has the space. So only if you can say, you know, we can't determine this matter until we get this report from somebody, so, you know, we can't take it till next week. And say, let's, let's have a special meeting in two days, or we'll close the meeting, we'll adjurn in two days' hands, at this time, at this location, this place, and we'll have, presumably they have the board meeting, you need to do that, you're not subverting anything, you're enforcing. I, I think they mean something like the fact that we're gonna have a meeting at two o'clock in the morning, you know, wherever you think, uh, well, give everybody a call me. So you're obviously trying to subvert that. Yeah, so any meeting can be done that way, if we decide that we wanna extend this meeting to another day, because we weren't able to finish conducting much business, and we thought the meeting would be done, and so we're gonna readjurn month, yeah, three days.
Or do you, or do you adjurn the meeting and have a special meeting in two days?
You can do either way.
Either way.
I think if you're sitting here, and the only difference I would have is if business is not in front of you, you know, like, if it wasn't, you've been, we've discussed before, and somebody just came in at the last minute and said, hey, we can, we can talk about X, and everybody goes, wow, we forgot about that, then you probably go to a special meeting, because you didn't have anything to discuss before, and it just came out of the blue. It's, it's a, but, you also, if you're sitting there, and a guy came in, and you just hit hard, and you're sitting there going, this is tough, we need to look at some things, adjurn it to that day. But done what you're supposed to do, which is you have people who are here at the meeting, at the meeting who are listening, now know where the next business meeting is. But the caveat to that is if you were supposed to be a public notice. Yeah, and that's, the question is, is that, the notice that, of meetings that we're talking about, instead of
Notice is popping.
Yeah, with a special, you have to do that. But also, people, I don't know if anybody has something, but people can sign up in advance to do this, 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 this. Yeah. And then that's, that, that trigger is, as I would say, is if you ever have, if you have a regular meeting today, and it's always a regular meeting, that's not notice necessary. If you have, every time you adjurn a meeting, or you have a special meeting, I'd say, if people request it, that's regular news. Or the notice is required for the session. Again, we're trying to make sure that then this magic happens, and people have a chance to notice that.
I get, I get a question on that, then, then, probably a moot point, but, uh, the list of people that Christie has who want notice of meetings, right? So we adjurned a day, and we decided we're gonna have a special meeting on Wednesday. Christie tries to, Christie tries to call the number, she gets everyone, but one, one, goes voicemail, mail box is full. What is her obligation on that, do we have to send a text, do we have to try the next day, but how, how does that work?
I don't, I have never looked at that, my guess is, is it just create a record, if you give contact, you know, it does not allow people to leave messages or give you actual good notice, then you take that risk.
Okay, okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, because I can see that happening, because some people, mail box is full, you know, voicemail, they never flirt it out, and if Christie tried to get them, if she could show on her phone log that she did on such and such time, such and such day.
I think that's, that should be asked, was if you've got someone showing that call, that could call.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, but when, how much is too much? If she gets a thousand calls, she can't get a thousand calls all done by tomorrow, or whatever.
I don't think that there is, well, there's no limit to the fact that this is statute says, if somebody asks for that notice, that's a part, and, and I think when you get to the level of that many people, which I'm sure there's places like Wishar, or somebody who has automated service, that, I mean, I'm thinking here of a city that I work for that has Constant Contact, I think it's called, uh, it's just like a email service, that, that you plug in, you have a listener already, and you say, send packs, you make send packs, and they have contact records there. So, to get to that level, we need to start thinking about how we do that effectively, because that's scary. But right now, it's, I don't think that we have to try to be overly solicitous and making sure that, you know,
What is acceptable?
She's set up again at the end of the earth.
What is acceptable form of contact? Uh, email? Phone?
And, and
Nets? Facebook posts on Michigan's page?
I don't think so.
Well, it's, uh, that's what I'm, I'm wondering, if that is
Yeah, I think it is, I think they can direct it, but I think it's in writing, it's text, phone, or email.
Okay, that's, I, like I said, I just curious.
Gmail posts, or even direct messaging on a platform.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
So, purposes of home, and this is, again, from statute, interconnection with the fact that a representative government is dependent upon, and the form of electorate is clearly the policy of the state, that means the conduct of government affairs, and the transaction of government business be open to the public. So again, that's the purpose, and that's to give you, again, that background, that justice defense of the why. I mean, we're trying to have, and the whole goal of this is, when you guys need legislative and official capacity, administrative capacity, where you're doing the business of the candidate, that you have that vote. You know, and, and, I mean, just to let that, to spirit that idea, I think what was interesting earlier, we had that little discussion about the door. I would be surprised if somebody thought of a corporate, they'd go, maybe it's because if, if somebody thought of a corporate, an open meeting, they'd go, wait, that's close. Because that says to me that the meeting's closed, correct? I think everybody should be able to see an open door, walk in, or if you're in session, correct? And even if you're not doing anything, they should be able to walk in, and, and I understand that there's always out there a distraction, and just define, since it's up there, what is an open meeting? Should work in that thing here. Yeah, uh, well, an open meeting in this instance just means, again, you have the right to be here and watch your business being transacted, candidates.
Right.
It is not an allowance for you, for people to interact unless there is a requirement. I mean, the statutes of Kansas have direct segments, that way you're supposed to take public comment. Right, budgets, R and R, you know, certain
We had one last
How many guns?
Because we were, we invited the public to come in here to give public comment on sales staff.
And you're perfectly welcome to designate a period of time that's open for public comment and take up. I think that's a year for two and a half hours.
Uh, sorry, Chris. It was a long time.
And that's where we get to this part of it, and we're, we're going right to it, which is, what you, what is the interplay here between what you guys are doing and what the First Amendment requires? requires? And, again, this is in the structure of the ten of the act, is the idea being that you're transacting business and they can watch you transact business.
Right.
Not that they have control or have say necessarily directly in a decision you're making, but they see what decision you're making and then can react in a way that they are entitled to, which is voting, which is letters to the editor, which is going out here on the quad and calling a press conference to say, hey, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna complain about this. And this is some, I got some quotes here, um, about that so you can understand this and feel more confident in what that division is. Because you really are talking about a difference in format here because this meeting is not an open session to discuss whatever the public wants to discuss. It's what you want to discuss. And when you want to be open, you can be open. When you want to close, we're going to close the public comment, right? So that's what this first point is. It's a Supreme Court case, Minnesota State Department. And I think I said something to this effect earlier. The Constitution does not grant members of the public generally the right to be heard by other bodies making decisions on policy. All the main organs in our system, the government, have never operated under constitutional constraint requiring them to accord every interest of a member of the public an opportunity to present testimony before any policy is adopted. Legislators throughout the nation who live in Congress frequently enact bills which no years have been held on which testimony is to be received from only a select group. Executive agencies likewise make policy decisions in widespread application without agreeing unrestricted public testimony. Public officials at all levels of government daily make policy decisions based only on the advice they decide they need to choose to do. To recognize the constitutional right to participate directly in governmental policy may come with a revolution in existing governmental practices. And as part of authority, this is the United States Supreme Court. Doesn't get any higher than that, nobody overrules them. This is lack letter all. So you see, basically, the, the idea. The other thing that they do is the law divides up areas of free speech zones for these public meetings of different forms. They call them public forms, or different types. The law recognizes this, it's a Supreme Court law, I mean. The first type is traditional public forms, which are places with a long history of being devoted to assembly and debate, such as public streets and parks. I'm trying to think of other examples, but if you, you know, if everybody has a debate or discussion at a coffee shop every morning, that's, that may be considered at some point or outside of the room, that, that may be considered a traditional public form. A non-constitutional public form, just lazy, okay? You guys are not designated public forms or locations or channels of communication that the government opens up and use by the public for expressive activity. Which means that the body that's in charge says, we can talk, and we, and you guys will fit within that and sort of ask, because it's only when you guys, it's not when the public decides. Public property is not open for public communication by traditional designations and then a non-public forum. An example, this would be the court upstairs. This court is not a public forum. See? And we put up another, our, our opinion is affirmed. So you can't go up there and, and express your feelings about things. You can, but a public meeting is very loud. And the other one is, there's a, I said three or four, nobody really cops the fact that there's three or four. A non-public forum opened up for selected speakers or some type of speed shot issues. Public forums are sometimes, sometimes called limited public forums. I mean, the distinction between that and designated public forums, and you get the idea. I mean, you have areas where everybody is known and, and sites that they can, with notice can talk, I got it in the front steps here. Your guys' meeting is designated, controlled, and the legislature can, so I have a question. Yeah. In revenue neutral meeting, if somebody came in, so that meeting is there so the public can ask us questions about the budget and climate, but if someone turns to the public.
Uh, revenue neutral first. You said revenue neutral, so.
Right, the revenue neutral meeting.
Go ahead, I had a question on one same line, but I don't know where you're going with this.
So revenue neutral, and they are acknowledged, they stand up, and, and the first thing they do is turn to the public and start to make a statement in general to the public, but not a question directed towards the commission that has to do with revenue neutral or the budget. What do we, what do we allow?
Well, you're allowed, you're allowed to neutralize the topic of designated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if you say, this meeting is about, is our required statutory open meeting about the revenue neutral and budget or whatever, just play it. And you would expect that that's the discussion you have. And if somebody ventures off and talks about something else, that's how.
I watch.
Yeah, not, not mistaken about if you'd like to see more of me watch my YouTube channel.
Yeah.
That was, that was exactly where I was looking at that. So if the topic, if, if the topic of the meeting is not general, whatever.
Specific.
It's a specific meeting to talk about this specific topic.
Yeah.
Then the chair has every right to shut them down and it's not a call-in, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and that, you can designate also, I mean, it's not unheard of, is that you, you guys just have, we're just having open forums, we're just having public comments. Every day, uh, every meeting, there's half hours outside for everyone to walk in. You don't have to have a meeting agenda, just sign your, give us your name and address so we tell you, you know, you live in the county, so you don't feel none. And say what you want for five minutes. It doesn't have to be about any topic specific, be about the aliens coming, and check me out, that's her.
Okay, let me go back to that, I may first. The, the first meeting three weeks ago was attended by one gentleman who refused to give his last name, who refused to give an address or anything like that, uh, said he didn't have to. Well, I, I'm, I'm, and now it's been joined by another gentleman. And so you have two out of county gentlemen who are coming in here to be disruptive and trying to stop us from doing our business like we're supposed to be doing. How do we handle that under an open meeting?
Yes. Your honor?
Yeah.
Can I basically just, I, I answer this question, I don't know if this would cause probably a.
Is there like a pending court case?
No, no, but they're, I'm just saying, be overly cautious. If you've, because we're talking about a specific situation that's happening.
Okay, if you want me to leave, just ask me to leave.
Please leave. Thank you. I'm too nice. Here's my chance.
We like you, Judge, but please leave.
Here's my chance to say, get out, Judge, and I.
Don't worry, and I know where all of you live.
That's the only time I'm ever gonna do that.
Yeah, you'll never get to do that again.
Give them their opportunity.
Okay, well, and that's, that's actually getting maybe getting my slides or straight on a little bit here because I want to cover this part. Designated non-public limited forms do not become traditional open forms by designated period of open comment. That, the rule of openness does not become required throughout meetings. It is, if you're limited to that time, that's it. If you're limited to another time, that's it. If you have, we've decided that nine o'clock is, you know, morning is the time of the part with the budget meeting, and we close the budget meeting, we're done, that's when it ends. And you can't, can't come in and talk about the budget at two o'clock because we're on the other side. That's that rule, that's a, that's, that's a court rule. And actually, this is a, the court rule is from this, uh, Archipaternal Television Commission case. A non-public forum only becomes a designated public forum of governmental, if government intentionally makes property or a channel of communication generally open and available to class speakers other than the meeting only selective access, particular speakers who must obtain permission. So again, that, if you have, one level is if you just have your required open session about topics, budget, zoning, R and R, bonds, you have opened yourself up to anything like that. Even if you go to that next level where you open the public comment, you can sit for a time which you, to my mind, you've never had, just basically open comment on, and you have, there's no purchase. Yeah. So, we've got to see a layout again. If you don't indulge me, we can talk about this in a, in a real case.
Yeah.
And I'm quoting here from, well, I bet the case is out here, Mr. Froggins versus the City of Pecos. And why this is good is because this is a case that is N P, is, is decided by the court here in Pecos, for dead crow, respect member of our judiciary back when it was decided. And it kind of demonstrates some of these rules that are in fact in how he granted summary judgment from the city on several claims that were made in that case. It kind of follows right along with this. And the reason why it's important is obviously we're Kansas, we're Kansas Division District of federal area and so forth. Federal cases broaden and broaden, and it goes up to the 10th Circuit and then the Supreme Court. Those are the bodies that rule and control what is the law in Kansas. Supreme Court, 10th Circuit, Kansas. And you don't have to pay attention to 3rd Circuit, Navy Department, California, whatever. This is right down there. So what happens, the facts are, um, interesting, but Mr. Froggins, uh, was mad because the City of Pecos appointed a gentleman from a religious ministry whom he believed was not fit to be in that position because he had apparently had a career with the job. So instead of, and there was a commission that was being appointed, and the city wanted to appoint him, and that was embarrassing and made this guy mad, so he wanted to come up in public session, public comment time, and say specifically outlining glory detail to what it had, how his wife had been, you know, manipulated and he was harmed. And basically, the city, the mayor should have met, said, no, you're not talking about that. As a matter of fact, get out. And he was escorted out. So of course he filed a legal lawsuit for damages and violations of First Amendment. And he was not successful in that, in that circuit. And some of the findings on this is reported is, unlike a traditional public forum, the government is not required to indefinitely retain the open character of designated public forum. Just like you said, City of Pecos meeting, like you guys, is designated public forum. Conduct the business of the City of Pecos, when they have open comment, they, it's allowed. When they stop, they stop. And they don't have to maintain it forever or whenever you want. And several courts, including the Supreme Court, have recognized the government's significant interest in conducting borderly efficient, effective, and dignified meetings in its public bodies. So they're the counterweight for all this stuff. And, um, you know, you can go blow by blow by, in the case itself, about why it decided all this stuff was taken under, you know, considered everything about free speech rights and the different form, and it came out, the city had the right to control this part of the meeting, conduct the business of the forums. And they weren't prejudiced against anybody, or they weren't harming anybody because they weren't taking notice, right? They'd go into other forums and complain about this guy, they'd go to newspapers, talk about it. But they just didn't have the right to come in the meeting and suspend everything and talk for ten minutes about it, was why. So, that's my slide of education on this question.
That's good. Frank Porcher.
Yeah.
Uh, I had, John, now, a question. Couple of boards I'm on, we do, it's open meetings, and we also have other comment. Are there any other municipalities, county governments that do anything like that that you allow? We'll start out with, I, I think the city does, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I mean, generally, I'll tell you, the practice has been, most of my cities is that they have public comment section.
Yeah. Or during the meeting. Right, you identify the time, okay. Well, I didn't get here in time, I'm like, sorry, we would help.
Yeah, and that, that's, I've, I've seen it, and this is really a question of, I think, if, you know, a lawyer would like to say, if I got one of those, that time is done, that time is done, and nobody ever came in late, we got a minute to comment. Come on, folks, we're, we're operating in a, in good faith with people who live here. And I, and I'm not going to sit here if somebody comes in, in, in my cities, have our, our public comment, and just wants to talk about, you know, kids circus coming to town. I'm not going to sit in front of them just because these rules have to be followed to the left. That's not how that works. And I want that to be that way. So, I don't think that is a very responsible way to do it, and I hope we never get to that point in other places. Because frankly, I've never really had problems with open comment periods because they usually are pretty respectful and limited and people. It is to inform some of the public about such events, but they may not otherwise know. But at the end of the day, business has to be done, and so when that comment time is closed, that should be it. And whether that's enforced is probably up to the chair. And I don't think, just because the chair, chairman of a meeting says, we're having a public comment now, ends, and then 30 minutes later, guy walks in and says, I got something. But that chairman doesn't have the authority to reopen it for that purpose. You can't.
I don't think that's where we've always been.
You would have that.
Yeah.
But you just can't, but you don't, but you could also say, sorry, man, I mean, we're on to, we're on to this.
Yeah, we don't have an designated time.
Yeah, and, and so that's.
And I mean, I, this is an open meeting. I love that, that's great, and I like interaction. Probably could have noticed that. I like interaction. And I like the fact that, Kathleen, I'm going to pick on you, that if we have a question, we'll say, hey, Kathleen, what do you think? And you sat back there and raised your hand and said, can I ask a question? And I don't think we've ever denied it. That's what I like about the back and forth.
What process should work.
Yes. But what I don't like is, just like what happened this morning. I, I, I absolutely abhor that. It just drives me nuts.
Yeah, and, and that's the decision, I mean, in essence, the public has to make in some respects because, you know, you have to control this. You've got business to do. And you agree with me that we, we have things to handle.
Yep.
And we're, we're not handling, we're doing other things. And it was fine line, and I would love for it to be a place where we can just have it. But if you don't, and we're going to be past the followed rules, I'm going to tell you the followed rules. I'm sorry about that, but, you know, the, the better function and the desires of folks out there who are coming here and just ask questions.
Do we, do we have to allow people to get on the event?
We do not.
Okay, that answers that question, right?
Yeah, we're going to talk about, there's some, there's some really detailed rules about that that I've been looking at, and I think there is some info maybe a little bit about, you know, whether or not you take comment from, you know, people who are up home.
Yeah.
So, you know, just, you know, in, in my comment case with Jay, also in K C. Jay said there are two counties, and he knows of them. If you are not a landowner in that county, you would be denied, or they're not allowed to even speak at their meeting. Landowner or less, or just landowner.
I'm sure it's written somewhere like, at least, older than you, landowner, hundred percent.
So where is the line, where we draw the line and say foul language is not allowed? Is it, is it protected by the free speech? Will they come in here and just curse us, curse anybody else? I mean, call them a name or whatever, I mean.
So, yeah, I, again, I don't know where, you go ahead then, I'll. Well, my answer is, is that in the context of this, there's, there's a certain part of it where you're rewarding your behavior anymore, perceived, right? By, by, you know, and that's, this is a chess match a little bit. But I don't, I think there's a question of whether a, a content, whether that is content-based decision. Every decision I'm talking about here is not content-based. I mean, you're saying, public comment time, we don't have public comment.
We don't?
We don't. We don't. That's not content based. There's another way to come and talk about, we don't have an open comment. Second of all, if you want to come into budget, that's not budget. This is the open meeting about budget. We're not talking about anything else. But you can restrict content to the matter to be determined. But that's not a violation of somebody else saying, you know, I'm for increased taxes, I'm against it. You know, that's their, that's their right. That's content based. People are saying, we're having a public meeting on the budget, and the only people who can discuss it who can agree with us will gather an increase in the levy by 10.
Yep.
That's not, that'd be evil.
Yep.
You can't either. But budget is a general, non-specific thing to take. And I would say that there's probably an argument for some people to say that when I, if somebody comes up here and just talks about whatever, curses, that you're, if you say something against that, that's content based.
So again, Jay tells me that there are counties that have, in city councils, that rules in the form of their meetings that go to county meeting boards. Yeah, if we have that resolution board, then that's a county that's responsible for that.
Well, we're gonna, he's supposed to be sending us some sand aside. We'll incorporate that into something that matches what we're talking about here. And hopefully we'll get to that at half meeting or we still have a public meeting at the same time.
Yeah, I'm more than, I'm more than willing to listen to anybody of any ideas that someone has. But when it comes down to the branding and raping that we saw today, that just seems to be, and I agree, they're all wrapped in this quip, mate, that's all it is. It looks like it, I'm not good. Well, I give it a try.
I did, I did, but that's, that's my.
The ladies in the audience, I'd like to ask if they were offended by that language, inappropriate or appropriate behavior? That, I mean, we want to know what you think too.
There you go, put me on the spot, yeah.
Both of you.
I'm not going to comment because I'm trying to be, I'm just trying to listen and understand and learn. So I'm not, I'm actually not going to say anything just because it's not comfortable and that's about it. And that's all I can say, it's uncomfortable for me.
Okay. We're going to take just a two-minute recess, Tim, down hall, just to get them in here.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to what you.
Okay.
We're not, or we're not.
I was done with President Nate, you guys have done your hour, Tim.
Okay. I just, it's only supposed to be an hour because, you know, I don't, what would happen if children, if you had started doing things like that at all?
Yeah.
Just listen.
Want to know Pecah history?
Yeah, yes.
About open meetings?
Uh huh.
Back in the day, there was a little, I think, remember it was a bar or restaurant, it was called Rec Lights. It was at Sixth and Worschberg, just a little east. I don't think the building is even there anymore. But there was a back room. And so the city commission would meet at Rec Lights, go to the back room, decide the business, go to city hall, and announce their decision.
Oh.
The good old days.
Yeah, that was, I think, probably before 1985, I assume, right?
Yeah. Give you a quick Sam Crow story.
Okay, give me.
The day he was sworn in, I said, Sam, every time I see you, I'm going to call you, you old son of a bitch. And as long as you smile, I'll know you're still human. I'm down in Kansas City with John Ambrosio at a C L A. Sam comes around the corner. I said, hi, you old son of a bitch. I said, I genuinely liked it and said, oh, excuse me, God. But we stayed friends.
Yeah. It was a, it was a good decision he made there. I was just talking about the case, I read the case, it was very thorough, good, great job.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. A little vague. Quick story. Dan may not even know this story.
Not really.
He started bawling. And he had a lawyer friend in Springfield observant that quit practicing because he was so embarrassed that he was bawling. There was a barber shop in Westboro, run by two brothers, I don't remember their names. And they sold really high-end wigs. So he gets himself a wig. And everybody said, you need to do something, some kind of a break so people won't notice it right away. So he and his wife go to Tan, Ruth, go to Tanter. He puts on the wig, goes out to play golf. He bends over to putt and.
Fall off.
The wig falls. So he goes back to the room, they put glue, they glue it on. Next event is swimming. So he goes out, dives in, the glue hadn't set, and turns the wig sideways. He and Ruth spent the whole night with fingertail polish remover getting the wig off of his head. Judge Sam Crow?
That's funny.
Okay.
So, thank you.
You bet.
Sorry, it's getting easier. It is. See you, Dave.
Thanks, Dick.
You bet.
Yeah. I think about extending a meeting.
Time limits? Time limits?
Yeah.
Or switch to a date.
Just because he's a retired one very bad.
So if a meeting was published and, say, how do you feel about a meeting? Do you, do they need to extend it to another date and time if that meeting is running over?
A little dumber, 10:30 at night.
Well, yeah, a little bit. How do you, how do you publish that? Don't you publish the planning board meeting starts at 6 o'clock on this date?
The appeals board starts at 8 on that day.
Yeah. Don't you put off, I mean.
Well, the answer to his question is, is that at the time, if you're going, start date is 10:30 and everybody's saying, we're not going to be able to decide, we need to do whatever, or we need to just, first, everybody's getting cranky or whatever, decisions, right? That being you adjourn it to midnight. Because everybody who had that notice is expected that they would be during the open meeting. Right? So if they're not, if they're mailed out at 10:00, I'm sorry.
Can't you publish it that the appeals board meeting will be directly following, 15 minutes following the adjournment of the planning board meeting? I mean, wouldn't that satisfy them?
I don't think, I would rather, if you did it, I would rather have a time. I mean, 15 minutes after that is, could be big.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, if the planning board meeting runs for three hours.
Well, and I'm worried, well, I'm worried about the fact that there's a little extra loss here in the sense that what we're talking about here is an actual zoning change to a property where people who are neighbors might be interested in it. And I want, I don't like the fact that they would be in a zone where they wouldn't be able to say, well, I can, when I sit my butt down at 8 o'clock in this room, I'm going to hear, you know, this, okay. And then if I'm sitting there, I mean, you know, we can't, we can't keep going, we got to continue, we got to delay it. They're still sitting there, and they just know that they're going to have to show up tomorrow. So you have that person sitting there, right?
So my question is, if the planning commission chair can say, we're going to extend, not extend it, but.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Yeah. Well, there'd be a motion, if there's a court, contingent there or whatever, there'd be a motion to adjourn the meeting, to extend time, and do a continued consideration of the amendment of the threat.
That's, that's just in case down the road if there's ever an appeals meeting after.
Right.
That heavy load on the planning commission.
So the chair can say that, I adjourned a motion to adjourn tomorrow evening at 7:00 P M. Then somebody would have to make that motion, second, and then pass. Yeah. Because if they, if you don't get a motion, well, or if they, I mean, the only thing I'm thinking of here is if you don't have the people there, I mean, the ones that are, one person there to adjourn it to. I think, I'm assuming that this is, you know, decent, decently attended, six people, five people, four people. Motion, you get that, you can do the meeting, that motion passed, adjourned, because technically, the body has to adjourn.
And if it's a regularly scheduled meeting and it's been published, then that's okay to do it the next day or the day after, whenever.
Adjourn to the next day or the Wednesday or whatever.
If it's another topic that they want to bring up, then it would have to be published again?
Right, well, I think it's regular, in regular meeting, people are charged with knowing that any relevant business could be brought up. If it's notified about a specific amendment or a specific change requested, then that would be different. But if, you know, if you have just a regular meeting and you covered everything, and you want to talk about one thing, and that's just going to take time, you know, you want to do it the next day, you can do that.
As long as the public is notified that you were going to discuss that possibly in that first meeting.
No, you know, you need to, I mean, if it's a general, I mean, if it's a regular meeting.
But the only time, the only time they have planning meetings, or if they're wrong, is when you have a zoning change to discuss, areas to discuss, something like that, that has to be specifically published in paper.
Okay.
That's the only time you have meetings, is when there's something.
Somebody's handing it in. Well, that was my mistake.
She couldn't, they, the chair couldn't adjourn to the following night, where the first night they talked about apples, and the second night they talked about oranges.
Yeah, that's right, that is right. I'm sorry, I thought there was just a, your meeting's always on the third Thursday, it's a general meeting, you can talk about it perfect. So you got, yeah. It has to be notified of a change in the topic.
I guess, unfortunately, I'm kind of puzzled about the adjourned to the next night rather than just keep going and get it all done, even though planning meetings or appeals meetings are scheduled for 8 o'clock. Because if you have four items that you're supposed to talk about, then.
Yeah, I think disconnect here is, I'm always thinking in these things, if you're talking about your guy's meeting.
Right.
Being your general meeting, meeting, essentially, in open meeting, if it's a regular meeting, any topic can come up and be decided by you. But not all people, there'd be a kind of appeal meeting.
Right.
So we get to, especially when you have, only if you have a topic to talk about.
Yes.
Couldn't you do a disclaimer when you initially post it? This meeting could possibly be extended to the next evening at 7 o'clock? And will you cover all your bases?
Well, I think, whenever you're talking about, whenever you're talking about the zoning matter, the specific notices are going out by statute.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and those are joining, I think, with the Open Meetings Act to say, they're being told by publication or whatever great notice you're giving because of 200 people or 1,000 people, that this meeting occurs at this time. And what that doesn't, that, I think that always is the case, that if you say, we're having a meeting at this time with a given notice in the meeting, that when that meeting starts and you're there, that goes on until determination is made or it's determined. Right? And if you, for whatever reason, you got to mail out at 9:30 because whatever, you give it up. I'm sorry, there's just no, you don't have a right to have your phone, right? Because that's when the meeting, if anybody who wants to see what happens has to stay in the start of that until whatever element is decided for.
So that's what I was curious about, how do you publish the revenue neutral and then the budget meeting? Could you publish it, that the budget meeting will follow directly after, revenue neutral? I don't remember, so I'm just.
Basically, that I have to do.
And that's, that's why I was.
Whether or not there's another statutory notice there, Mr. Crowe. Right? You have published a notice, says, and you have to have it in some prime place.
Right. Darn honesty, you know, between certain meetings.
Yes.
And the ones that are legendary.
Look at me, I'm done with chat on this.
I do, but I'm a little confused. So if there's something that's been published, and say we have four zoning changes, and there's a lot of public comment about it, and it doesn't get resolved, 8 o'clock, there's an appeals meeting. What I'm asking is, can they adjourn with a motion to?
Okay, so the appeals meeting is the same body, right?
No.
One person on both the appeals and the planning zone?
Okay, for the zoning feels, those in is, what, different, it's obviously different from the planning, you don't have a zone.
The planning commission at 7, and then the appeals board at 8. The appeals board is a smaller body and one member is on both boards.
Yeah, gotcha. So, okay. Well, that's, yeah, that is a problem. So you've got the first meeting running over, where it doesn't use it. Right? Okay. Or it doesn't happen, there's no separate body meeting, it's only the eight. And in the same place, notice at the same place, it's different times, different bodies. Okay, well, solution number one is, and I don't know if this is the possibility, move it to another location. You like us to get one person to the board. You still have enough people on the board of zoning appeals to do, you have forum.
Possibly, possibly not.
And this is, yeah, this is going to be complicated because of the chess moves you have to be able to do this. I mean, my, well, let's, yeah, my overarching concern, I mean, my overarching concern is that the publication notice goes out and says a date and time, that when that meeting starts. Now, open meeting, and the special for a notice says to me that when that time and place comes, that that body has to be sitting there ready to rock it all out. Does that have enough people there or whatever, that's another thing, but it's going to move. Because that way, I can, if I'm the guy who's getting the notice and I have a problem, I show up at 8 o'clock for the opposing, and they, as long as I'm sitting there and they say, okay, well, obviously this thing could go on forever because they're only two, they're only three, two things for. We're, the board of zoning fields adjourns its meeting to tomorrow. I'm sitting there, so I sure noticed guy, open meetings noticed guy, I've seen it, I know. I've been given the appropriate notice to go to next day. And then dispose the shifts from that date to the next day.
So, but is there a reason why both meetings are always on the same night? Can't the appeals be a completely different night, so you can get it on one night?
It just, okay, it's.
It just makes sense that Kate would be coming in one night rather than, but I'm just going to get back to the point, date and time. The date is, what, the 10th, October 10th. The planning and zoning is at 7 o'clock. And published the notice for appeals, which is October 10th, directly following the planning and zoning meeting.
It doesn't say 8 o'clock?
That is not a time? No, I mean, why say, if you can't do it directly following the planning and zoning meeting, that's, that constitutes a time, right? That's giving you a specific, general time of what it is, directly following.
I don't, I don't. I, again, I'm going with the guy who's getting the notice. I've got to know, I don't have to sit there. Because the other meeting, yeah, it may, it may be over at 7:15.
Right. So you better be there at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I.
Because.
I would err on the side of the community.
Two separate notices, and it says 8 o'clock. 7 o'clock on the one notice and 8 o'clock.
And if you're doing a disservice to the people who have come to hear the four topics by saying, well, we're going to adjourn tomorrow now because we could be thrown.
Well, I think we're talking about different things. I misunderstood the question to be, I mean, under that scenario, what I'm saying is, being sort of 70 to go. It takes two minutes because your board of zoning fields, you're coming with one guy who's there. We're adjourning that meeting for tomorrow. Or we're going on to our planning commission at midnight. And then, and maybe they get so frustrated, you know, 10 o'clock, they say, we're going to go.
So you would adjourn the appeals meeting? So, you would, you would adjourn the appeals meeting until the next day and keep going with the other? I mean, indeed, that makes, that makes more sense than...
Yeah, but again...
That you're still...
But the eight o'clock people who sit there, radio all, knowing that the meeting is adjourned. How often do you have an appeals agenda? Five out of the twelve months?
No, not really.
So, that's why I said, to simplify this, just put it on a different night, and then there won't be a cop.
I think the reason behind it originally, this, this happened way before meeting, right? Is that there's a, there's always a member on both boards. It's paying additional mileage on that one person, I don't know, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I would worry, yeah. It seems to me if this was like a repeated problem, that I could have started about it, but... There's the one time out of fifty meetings, and this is a clock, and...
Don't ask me, you know, how to know.
Yeah, and, and you got the best method I know, which is, have everybody there say, we're just meeting for, we're interrupting, this is a recess of the planning commission, following the order, the meeting of the board of zoning appeals. Can't do it, X, Y, Z, it's being adjourned to the...
Do they, do they just move the timing?
They move the time and say, we just, we just need another half hour. Moving its time.
Yeah.
There's no problem with that. It's just that, wouldn't that have options? Yeah, when, when the person sitting in that chair is listening to this, that they still got time to come back when it starts. Yeah. Okay, all right, we're gonna move ahead with the next question.
We're gonna break you.
Thank you, Todd. You bet, um, it's a lot.
Todd, thank you, well, you're...
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna go ahead and leave, um... You wanna interrupt the...
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
We'll see what we can do here.
Do you have enough time?
Uh, probably got about an hour.
Okay, yeah. We'll, we'll, Tim, you're up, back, come on up, please. How are you, Tim?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, yeah, okay.
I don't need much time with you then, just want you to... We've updated where we're at, through, there's a lot of things going on at Interim across the whole enterprise, so things are being tapped over, licensing is being transferred, one provider is working with the other provider. Tomorrow, the new service provider, IP Pathways, will be on site, and they'll be putting in firewalls that they're gonna manage. The other one, Bridge, the main firewall, which will finish up today, that's a bit over at the Staples.
Okay.
And Notchusweed, if the first time we had Notchusweed, architect it out, it shouldn't be, it'll be just like everybody else, I'll get it done. Um, so, that works going well. What I'm a little bit concerned about, and I'm gonna be kind of, is, net-net, because now they're handing off backups, they're trying to fill in, what can be good backups? They're already doing backups right now with a new provider, but they're figuring in the month, they're gonna delete the old backups who have the network's plus, so it's just transitional issues. But right now, they are looking at bringing on, everyone wants to do network on October twenty-third. The problem I have about right now, because we're still working, we were still working the firewall, as she said, this morning, and we'll be getting tomorrow, getting that done now. I didn't know what vehicles is down, so, I guess we have other parts to count. The problem we have is, we have to drop this network for about thirty minutes, the internet, so we transfer those firewalls in. It's not a big deal, Red and Bridge, it's not a big deal, Notchusweed, but we can't leave it here in four hours, without it, like, small businesses, so we're gonna put that for, a few, four, three months.
What's the, what's the, uh...
Motivate discussion.
Yeah, and they do it for fifteen, yeah.
We should have done it in twenty minutes or thirty at most. So, it'll be done, it'll be passed, and all it's gonna do now is patch back the firewall. So, we got both firewalls up there, and it's just passing traffic to make sure that it's not gonna clog anything that's currently going on. And then we'll start getting those next week, and then there won't be any more of the old firewalls, and we're gonna go off to the new firewalls.
And then, when will IP, IP pathways will be completely on board handling everything on the twenty-third?
It looks like it right now.
It's, go ahead.
And so, we do have one agenda from them we decided, and all it's doing is backing what we agreed to, uh, one month earlier, because they're actually starting services earlier than I thought. And the other issue was, we had this schedule in the week, so go to the front or act like that. What, you know, what is this we're doing early and all that? But they had to buy licensing and stuff for their services for us, under the dispatch act, they had time to get those services in place. So, we're already using licensing and services right now, and we're gonna come over this month. And all it is, is a simple, so you should just change that initial, uh, start date on the, not the master's agreement, but the other one, the sub-agreement, or the one that, or when you get that signed back.
So, basically, setting, we're starting on the...
Yes, starting on the door. Um, okay, so that's the month early, that you move and get out, and of course, you will be up the head fire.
Okay.
Um, but there'll be a one month bubble, will there be a bubble at the end, of the contracts with network plus? So, it's the only thing left, it'll be like two thousand hours, so we all make backup, that they're not aged out at Red and Bridge.
Okay.
So, there'll be one move came in, and their services are all done, we're done with that, that'll wait. So, we have a bubble month going on in there, once the little area, once it gets started, it's not much of a bubble, but that's going on. MFA, that's the issue I'm dealt with right now, because, uh, we agree with them, we're gonna bring that down. And we're even voice over IP, which we're trying to figure out, some of the new ones is on with voice over IP. Like, some of our people, you can dial directly in and get their number, but some of the people like Aaron or Randy, just in the office, where the tree jumps out, and so we gotta deal with dial directly to her number, and if you dial directly to her number, according to this, that you're going to the tree. So, we're working out the IP addresses, and then cell phone issue, it'll be yours, theirs, anybody's. We need to work with Christie to get the numbers the employees want, call, when you go to sign on. And they'll be the voice call, or more, no, they're four times, or is it, well, I, I am talking about that, we're going, you know.
Yes, Chris, Dave.
Okay, if you're gonna require an individual to use a personal cell phone to have the log on the computer, yeah.
So, I'm just glad that should not be an issue, I mean...
It's, it's gonna get thrown out there, I guarantee it.
I, I understand that, and if it does, I, I, I don't buy that, because, um...
I already have one working on it, so I don't care, but I know I'm gonna come out, I do, people ask that.
Now, we're talking, but we're not talking about downloading any kind of application on the cell phone.
They're just getting a call or a text.
They're just getting a call on their cell phone, their personal cell.
On their personal cell.
Or a text, either one, they just get it into their personal cell phone, but nothing...
But right now, right now, so, I'm gonna use Red and Bridge as an example, they use their personal cell phones all the time, you communicate with the manager.
I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just telling you what's going on.
Oh, yeah, I know, so, I think it's a non-issue, I really do, and I don't see it, I see people are gonna complain, but I don't think that it is an issue, uh, I mean...
So, the only other pathway, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it to the next level real quick, Mark. If, if Christie has three people that come to her and say, I'm not gonna answer my cell phone when it comes to work issues, unless their only alternative to get their, uh, two factor off them.
Then I'm gonna be able to sign on, just, just take it one word at a time. But right now, it's that one number to give us. Uh, I ain't gonna look at texts, I'll give you texts instead. But that's what I'm concerned about, so we're not locked out, we're not shocked in the staff. I would say this, I think if, if they're gonna wanna do any of those things, and I, I still think they have opportunities, and I think maybe some individuals are the ones that brings the tree that think we can IP them right to the desktop, let's get that figured out, we can do that, I don't know what...
Say, what, what do you mean, uh, IP them right to the...
Well, we don't have to everybody write the desktop, but right now, we're dealing with a branch issue, where we have one, we have one employee in every office, says the anchor on the branch, when you call their number, it automatically goes to the tree, it doesn't go to their number like everybody else, and we need to figure out that issue. And then even if I'm the person in the office, and my number is the tree, I still get that number directly to you when it comes to... That's what we're working through right now.
And isn't part of that with networks block, or I mean, uh, giant communication, correct?
Part of it is giant, but the solution piece of that is actually from the IP pathways.
Okay, so, I guess, Christie, I, I would say, if you have people that bring that up, I don't want you to have to take the brother, that takes a command of business with, I mean, you're the, you're, unless it's in your department, so if you're an elected official, uh, they just need to deal with it, you're an elected official. Um, but otherwise, they won't be able to log on. They're not able to do their job.
If they are not able to do their job, then there's, there's ways to handle it.
Yeah, and it's hard, yeah, obviously.
Yeah.
So, we'll do it, we can work around that issue. And if we're down to one or two, we're down to one or two, and then we need to work on how to do one or two.
Okay, um...
But they go down block.
So, I don't like those anymore.
See, the other thing is, we could probably, if someone sends their personal email, but then they won't have to use their phone on their personal email.
If they don't, if they don't wanna answer a text, then they might not wanna answer an email. They look in the email to get their code.
Um, okay, so, let's, let's fast forward, uh, to the twenty-third. IP Pathways is on, online, whatever, they're handling everything.
Yeah.
And so, one of the things that we need to have available for department heads and elected officials is a contact person there, that when Christie or Kate has an issue, that they can reach out to this person directly. Because that's basically, I mean, right, the, they're the ones handling, so if I'm working on my laptop and I, and I have an issue, they're the ones that are handling it ultimately, so every department head should be going to...
Yes.
IP Pathways and saying, okay.
I'll have a real information sheet for everyone, the elected officials and appointment officials for their units.
Okay.
And it'll tell me exactly who that is, and the number and the email, and you have, and every individual in our organization, you get on the phone and order the service. I think it's the best practice to make sure you manage your server.
I would agree, so, I, yeah, in, in your office, Aaron and Mary would go, hey, I have this issue, I'm gonna contact them directly, because I know what it is, you're gonna say, I'm aware of it, and now...
But Christie and I are gonna see everything, just like we do today, so it doesn't matter if it comes out of Red and Bridge, or Notchusweed, or, we'll still know what's going on, because we see the traffic.
Okay, um, but yeah, I think, I think that's, ultimately, that's where we wanna get, is where every department head, an elected official, their people all have a direct contact, uh, to IP Pathways to handle situations.
I would say that, right.
Yep.
And, and will still be able to get an administrator password?
Yes.
Uh, I don't like that, not what she asked about, can I administrate and sign on to the server, make changes on the server? That's the most great fact that she talked about.
But you need to be able to do that.
I need to be able to, yeah, I need to be able to, uh, add new people, listen in for attacks, and change authorities.
The tax stuff is in the four hundred stuff, right?
And I need to be able to download, like, my screwdrivers, or I need to have my election stuff.
Okay, well, we'll, let's, uh, let's get, this is you specifically, right?
Yes.
So, we'll get Christie to figure out what she needs, and even the other she needs to know.
I'm not sure if any other departments would need that.
No.
So, we can ask the question.
It's a problem, because one of the questions you have, straight out on your IP stuff, for security and accounting, for your insurances, do only certify the, or do you only allow certified technical staff to make changes on your network?
Okay.
Only.
Okay, and so, if we restrict that to one person...
If we know what she's doing, that's, we'll be able to go, I'm, I gotta negotiate that, but I don't think that would be... There'll be exceptions for sure. There'll be exceptions for sure, but...
So, I need to have to go through IP Pathways, if we wanted to add a new employee, or change pay rate or something like that, so it would be...
Not pay rate, but if we wanted to add a new employee, then we got a new email address, we got a new desktop, we got a lot of things to do for, a lot of those. You know, we, we get an employee up and running in about thirty minutes or so, on a Monday morning, so you know about it right now, if you're a response, I don't know how I'd have that, but I would be...
So, new employee comes in, talks to Mary, Mary hands him a handbook, goes through the whole process, takes down all the information. Mary can just email IP Pathways and say, this is my new employee, um, here's the information, please input it, verify when it's done.
Yeah, and, but we should also, we should know before meeting, when we have new employees coming up, so we shouldn't wait till the morning, new employees should, uh, start that process.
Yeah, just exactly.
Sometimes it's a problem, though.
Uh-huh.
Sometimes we don't know when to wait once, can't we?
Well, in, in that case, just tell us, or just do it, because we're fast on it. I'm just saying, if I know Thursday, I gotta work on it Monday, why is it on Thursday? It just gets us on the board, it's personally Monday morning, reserves the time, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, a lot of times, they don't know that we are the employee until they show up to the desk.
Or they want to...
Not because, not because, yeah, it's because of the share of...
Yeah, okay, so, you, you have turned another part of that, Chris, thank you. We have, they've discovered that, well, they discovered, so, part of which is why they had all these issues with Notchusweed and everything. But, um, we've got providers of software to dial in remotely to support us, like Thompson Reuters, and CIC, and, um, CarpeL. And they've been set up appropriately, where they have complete domain access to it, which is nuts. So, like, this is all being changed, but we're reaching out to each one of those to say, hey, we got a new provider, we're changing domain access. It's really not doing anything except making it more secure, but we gotta make the changes with them. But we're, because they, people do this to us, to people like a vendor says, hey, we're changing this, you guys gotta go to this. Well, we gotta go do that, right, because we're there, so now, we're gonna go away. So, Christie already sent them Allen's information for Thompson Reuters, I sent them, uh, whose information did we get? Let's see, oh, we got Brad for all that's with the camera system, his camera systems are up there, they got tons going on on those firewalls, to the sheriff's stuff. And then there were, there's this people, which I've kinda figured out, called ITI, and I think it's CarpeL, I talked to Corey earlier. But I didn't know it, but CarpeL is actually dialing in, because there's no server anywhere, but they've got clients they manage on those desktops, so I think it's CarpeL.
Okay.
So, we'll get that one. And the last one is Kelly Law, now, I'm familiar with Westlaw, and I don't know if they follow this law?
No.
Who is Kelly Law?
She has, she has something to do with, I think, maybe the taxes, and then that we have this...
Are you familiar with this person?
Yeah.
Kelly, I mean, that would be me.
So, maybe it's the tax person Linda works with?
Yeah, it's something, it's something to do with that, you have that some, I'm sure, but she does.
Well, here's the deal, as we go along, we'll break it, and, and we'll fix it, since we find out. But if we break it, it's okay, because if she needs, if she needs it immediately, she'll tell us, and we'll fix it immediately. But if it's something Jimmy does once every sixty years, do tax things and stuff like that, or if she doesn't come in really again, we don't want her in. So, we'll, we'll flush that one out, but this is a while apart right now, it's Kelly Law and this ITI, so we got that one.
Okay, yeah.
That's about where we're at, it's moving quick, and, and, I don't know what they're doing for a month, and then I'll send it just start up and run it, and that's what we're doing, so... Now, there is an important date, I'll get out to Christie and stuff, but, um, the employee protection stuff moves over, and so what, uh, Network Services actually is, they're gonna uninstall through the network at nine AM on Monday the sixteenth, all this software they have going on, all this, the sense of the network control stuff, where they can do remotely all that. So, they're asking, all this stuff in the network, now, we're gonna have some that are on the network, but on the sixteenth, at nine AM, I'll put out, you know, business managers and like, different new staff, not staff, just managers. Um, trying to get everybody up and have this cheese on the network on the sixteenth. And all we're gonna do is do them down, and just roll it to the top, and then we'll deal with whatever's left, and then we can... Because we got the wall I talked about, they're gonna kinda hang out in the dust, we don't see the rock on the network. Mostly out of pressure, or vehicle, so, we'll have a few strategies. And starting to just clean this stuff up now, making sure the two are comfortable, put a network in place, and start them.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, thank you for doing, yeah, to work.
Todd's here for a few more minutes, uh...
Okay.
Just, I'm gonna review that email.
Yeah, let's do, like, uh, they, they need the ten minutes, turn it quite a bit, which, yeah.
Didn't we have something to get signed?
Yes, your, thank you, your...
I sent it to you, Christie, this morning on email, and it should be an attachment, it should have originated from IP Pathways, from, uh...
We'll get that signed.
Yeah. Make sure she's got it. All right, so who's in?
Okay. All right, entertaining motion, we're going to do a second session for ten, ten minutes, pretty flying.
Yes, Karen. I'm gonna go into section session purpose, attorney flag, thoroughly discussions, per, purpose, what about period, uh, ten minutes, you said?
Yes.
Thirty and a half, three thirteen, to reopen three thirty, three twenty-three, mission being through. Second.
All of this now, we're doing the second, we're doing the second section.
All right, I will move that we have off the twenty twenty-five holiday schedule for Jackson County employees. Second.
For twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good move, the second, that we have off twenty twenty-five calendar, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, all of those things, I believe we follow Supreme Court hands, we just, uh, I think we follow the Supreme Court.
No, we don't.
Sure. Uh, I thought we did.
We don't leave due to.
Well, that, that's the exception, yeah, but we usually, they sent it to us, we usually duplicate it, with that exception.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to ask Kate if she has a number, uh, I guess we'll table this until next week, the, the, uh.
Mary?
Mary, a lot.
Yeah, but she probably had time to do any research.
I followed that, just as I said, so, we'll table that. I don't have anything else.
I've got nothing.
Nor I. I gotta zoom, Wednesday, Christie, if I can get help. I don't know what time yet, they're, they're gonna probably tell me at the last minute, probably in early, half in the day.
This is the hard part of this.
I don't think that's everything.
You want that?
Yeah.
Where's that club?
Say, say, oh, that one stays on.
Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Um. Entering the motion to adjourn, somebody.
Second.
It's been moved to the second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I'm just gonna move on. Next.
All right.
I've got it down, it was passed, um. We pull, we usually pull this cord, definitely.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, okay. Everything fine, thanks. Next. Tuesday. Next Tuesday. Yeah. And we'll have bills that day, the fifteenth. Okay. We may start.
I like your thing.